We stand for prayer and prayers.
Praise God, our heavenly Father, as we quiet our hearts this morning and come before you, we want to thank you for all your many, many blessings in life. Lord, we want to ask you to be with our employees. We ask to put your hand of guidance and protection over them. Be with our first responders, Lord, especially them, as the things that you're doing within our society today. And Lord, we don't want to forget about the people in Carolinas that was affected by the hurricane and Doge in California that's affected by the fire. Lord, we ask that you might intervene there if you see fit, would just give me the glory for that. Now, we'll give us knowledge and wisdom to make the right decisions for our county that we can go forth and prosper. And we ask this in Jesus' name, we give you the glory.
Can't please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You started that story there. These chairs, it's changed all the time. I've never seen them in my life.
Well, we do have other meetings.
Yeah, I know. I know they do. All right. Jason and myself's here and Dutch is on by Zoom and a couple of people from the public, Lauren, Luke and Alan's here. You got anything else to, the agenda there, Lauren?
Let's see, I added a correspondence, region eight notice of meaning, KAT twenty-two is under just an improvement project, just add that. Uh, I believe that was the only two things since it was sent out.
Your motion to approve the agenda. I, motion to approve it. I'll second that. Minutes from the previous meeting, you don't have.
Won't have minutes until my office is back in order.
When will that be?
March.
March. I won't get any minutes till March. We was down here the other day. It's really looking pretty good. There's a few little things that could have been better. Uh, but it's not bad in there.
But we got, we got, only got about a quarter of our stuff over there right now.
Yeah, I know. And I never realized that, that, that your room over in the vault was that bad.
Well, the shelves were against the vault.
Oh, God, it, it looks awful.
They haven't been moved since eighteen ninety-one.
Eighteen ninety-one, it, it's bad. I never realized it was that bad. But anyway, uh, we got the report here from the assessor's office in December month. Seems pretty good, but very, very little bit of work done there. Of course, she's in the process of moving also. And you kind of gotta take that into consideration because if there's a lot going on right there that move, people don't realize. Uh, the animal control, we got the dog warden here, we picked up eight, eight dogs, twelve cats. And it was, all of them were sold or given away. One dog was euthanized. Four animal bites. Four people exposed to rabies. And then there's one of them sent for testing. I don't understand why there's anyone special testing for it. Or rabies exposure. But anyway, should be wanting to look out for rabies this summer. I'm the charges. Take charge of something though. I'm not sure what are those state charges?
These are, oh.
I've seen that. Three state charges.
Probably what she refers to prosecutor.
Oh, okay, that could be.
They have her yearly review, yearly report checking.
Yeah, a hundred and forty-five dogs yearly, a hundred and twenty-seven cats yearly, two rabbits and a rooster.
And her new heating system, that's not on here, but her new heating system, heating and cooling system has been installed, final invoices and bills today, they finished up last week. I've not talked to her, but based on the fact I haven't talked to her, I'm assuming it's working well. Um, and our candles have come at all for raised beds, so we're actually about, we're about finished with that grant.
All right, Mineral County year-end collection report, hunting and fishing license and all that. Total collections for the year was still over seven hundred thousand dollars.
It's a little less than last year, a little more than the year before, so.
Hundred and eighty-five marriages in Mineral County last year. So we'll move down here to the, we got a credit from the Division of Correctional Rehabilitation Regional Jail for seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. Then we got another credit from the regional jail for a thousand eleven hundred, one thousand eleven dollars, thirty-four cents. And then we go down, they got from the Federal Aviation Administration is conducting an, their an articles study concerning the following, structure and location, that's at Mount Storm. So they give you longitude, latitude and all that good stuff. So if anybody wants to read that. We have a thing here, grant greetings from the National Association of Counties. We, as we approach the closing year, we are pleased to share with you the final report uh, for the National Association Counties, which was established to examine during role, there's all in all, in counties government operations of service. And they don't really tell you much in there, do they?
And it has to do with artificial intelligence. It was just a report they did. The whole booklet is here, it's a little pamphlet.
Is that, this right here? Is that what this is around this?
Yeah, I just copied the front cover. It's actual booklet you want to get. Artificial intelligence, it's way down.
I do use it every day, but.
I use my own intelligence, it's not artificial.
Sure. And also Public Service Administration, wireless E nine one one, scrap or fee, check at two hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars, eighty-seven cents, which will go to the nine one one.
We did set up that state as clearing account or ACH deposit account, so we'll have to get with the state, so these kind of checks will actually start coming in like, you know, electronic to the um, bank account because now we just have to sit and wait for the paper check to come and hope that it makes it here. So one by one, we'll get the uh, Supreme Court checks online with it and everything, so we'll just tackle one, one check as it comes, and then that way we can ensure that the information provided is correct.
And will you guys still be somehow like rip sheet or something that shows that it's received, so we have.
That's the problem, no. And then you go onto their site and there's, the only description they actually give you is the same little information that came on the check, which isn't very much information. Sometimes it can just be a mixture of like forty-eight letters or numbers and that this, you know, whatever.
But you guys got to give us something that shows it came, it's like always.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. And then also when you get the receipt where it's deposited as well.
Okay, even just the receipt, because that's what, like all of our grants, I keep copies of the checks and stuff, so you know we got reimbursed.
Yes, that's why we always put copies of the receipts on your pockets too, so it's just on a matter of us trying to figure out what, where they actually go.
Okay.
And we got a thing here from Breeze Line, notice of price changes. Uh, and they give us a copy of that. Looks like everything's going to go up a little bit. Local TV. It's going to go up from forty-nine ninety-nine to the new fifty, fifty-three ninety-nine. We got our other things here. If anybody wants to see that, copy of that, I'll have it here. Okay, Region Eight Charred Waste will meet Tuesday, or I'm sorry, Thursday at ten o'clock. Uh, their Region Eight Office Building in Petersburg, they got to conduct a regular meeting there, should Region Eight and.
Breeze Line, the only thing the North End residents have, or do you guys have, sorry, I didn't interrupt you.
No, go on.
Is, is Breeze Line the only thing the North End residents have for like options along twenty-eight and stuff, Dutch?
I'm not sure.
Man, that's expensive. Buy it on through Comcast for five hundred bags, sixty-five bucks a month. Their cheapest is eighty-two dollars. That's sorry, I didn't, that was just a that's a lot more than what I'm paying them here.
All right, so when we go to old business, we don't have any boards, one, it's nothing. Do, do we need anybody on any board?
First committee, we still have vacancy on there. So I haven't gotten any letters from the first committee yet, Dutch, you got any interest?
Yeah, we have interest, uh, but I haven't been able to catch up with the woman yet to, uh, to get her letter or make sure that she wants to be on it, so. Um, I had lost some contact information with the holidays and stuff. I don't know, I'm still kind of in holiday mode here, got so much going on, trying to get caught up, but uh, um, I'm really behind on a lot of that stuff right now.
I guess.
Yeah, so should have something the next meeting, I'm hoping.
That was the thing I had to think of right now.
All good.
The next item, we have updates, we have to wait for Luke to get back in, but the one thing you have there, he gave me yesterday um, was pay app twenty-two, this would be fifty thousand for Fair Chance and then six thousand for Tom. I'm going to. What was that, one door?
Wait, do we switch back to the assuming he's the one that put that in here.
Well, this is the drawdown to if you want to approve it, but then I'm sure he's going to give you updates on the project.
Luke, we're here with the drawdown here, and you've done anticipation on twenty-two, you've done anything here?
Yeah, sorry, uh, without joy. The fobs are denying everybody access to their offices at the moment, so. I do, so several things, Roger was in earlier this week, but all of the offices have mentioned blinds. Um, we have a lot of windows that need blinds, so I did, um, pull up the information for what JJ bought over at the sheriff's office, um, for those exact blinds, so the ones that go up from the bottom, from the top or the bottom, under the blackout cellular shade, certain match for the same color, which is a whale watch. For all of the windows, the whole front of the building, Lauren and Kim's offices, and then the assessor's office on their side, and then the family court waiting rooms downstairs. Um, it is six thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. Now, um, I can take that off, but professional installation is only a hundred and fifty dollars and they will come and measure and verify the, um, verify everything and then come do it. Um, maintenance has been extremely busy, um, and a hundred and fifty dollars is very little on something like that to make sure they're done right.
Is that for women?
No, that is for the whole job.
Really?
Yeah, I thought that was, um, almost unreal.
What, what's the impression there's wing?
Um, six thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars. Now, I realize there are two more windows he didn't measure yesterday.
Six thousand two hundred.
The two, two or three windows off, when you go down the magistrate hallway, they have two or three windows there. They currently have blinds, build blinds, and I feel sure they'll be upset if we buy blinds for the whole building and just leave their Walmart mini blinds up.
Two, two's all you need?
There's only window in my office and Kim's office. Now I say there's only two windows, that's the whole side.
Yeah, but, but the sun hit you a good bit there.
Oh, yeah. But see, in the morning, the sun comes up right there. It comes right in.
I never noticed it in the other offices, but when I walked into the sheriff's office over there, you can't, you can't turn your head sideways.
No, because they've got windows all the way on the side, and Jill gets the afternoon and evening sun.
So.
She couldn't even see her monitor, the sun was like shining like granite.
And these are actually like, so for Lauren and Kim's windows, they're huge windows, but these are actually, uh, it's one blind that comes down in two places, so they're six hundred and thirty dollars apiece, but it's a nice blind.
Do you want to approve it now?
Kind of need to, to kind of get things.
Yeah, oh yeah, for sure. Well, I'm ordering, can I go ahead and add the two we need from magistrate though? Um, that's, I'll have to look, but they're about two hundred dollars apiece, I guess. Um, two twenty-six, I'll get you up to measure.
It would be seventy-one. Which is seventy-one hundred or seventy. Yeah, approximately seventy-four hundred.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be close to seventy-four, because it'll be another four hundred dollars for those two windows.
Dutch, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Do you hear a motion?
Make a motion.
So move.
And Jason seconded and I approved that also. Approximately seventy-four hundred, you got to have it.
It'll be good to have them installed before we actually start putting the cabinet, you know, stuff the tables in front of it, we have to move everything.
Well, and that includes like your election room too. We went in and got blinds for that, like when you saw your election appointment.
Yeah.
Because I figured while we're doing it, we might as well do everything.
Yeah.
Okay, or just pay up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't, no, that's all right.
I needed that.
Okay, yep.
So you got anything else to add on that?
Um, on the payout, no, that's a, um, it's a small one because the last one was huge, like we just sent him a million dollar check, so now there's very little progress happening. Um, so that's, that's why that check, that one's so small, but yeah, that one needs approved, and then I've got a couple more things under this.
Do I hear most approved payout here, twenty-two?
I make a motion and pay it.
Second, okay, and I approve it also, okay.
I have a couple more things on this one.
Right here.
Um, okay, so two more things. I have extra data pools done to the assessor's office, because when Chris Volb and I walked around, he said the assessor used network printers everywhere and they needed more data. Um, I didn't realize that everyone used, um, network face printers, because our office doesn't. Um, so I just assumed that everyone did it how we do it with USB printers, and actually, we all just share one printer. Um, so Lauren's office does not have enough network connections. Um, P three's been supposed to send me a price, but I've not received it yet. We need, um, twelve more data runs pulled. Um, I don't know what the cost will be. We just ordered some CAT six, um, but that's one of those things we're gonna have to have done, um, or we're gonna have to have mini network switches laying everywhere, and that's.
Can you not do wireless?
Um, not on their network printers, they're all hardwired.
And they didn't run the wire for my reception desk or for the coffee machine?
Well, yeah, the reception desk, they owe us a floor box. Um, so we'll have to pull that one, but the, the other data pools we do need, um, I, I guess you can't make the motions on a price, but unless you all tell me otherwise, I'm just gonna have to have them do that once they let me know what it's gonna cost, and then they can do it.
That's our only option? To pull new network, new cables?
Well, you're either gonna do it now or you're gonna do it later.
Yeah, because they, they, there's twelve drops that need to be added. Um, I've got Hotchkiss downstairs. We didn't have him in the original plans, because it wasn't one of the occupied, so I had Supreme Court run data in there. But he didn't even put his desk where Supreme Court got data, um, which I've got him hooked up working at the moment. Um, but yeah, that we have to have those twelve drops, or the only other option is to buy the mini network switches for all of those, all of those desks, but that will, that'll be a mess.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, P three's been pretty reasonable on those. I can't imagine that it's going to be like some huge substantial cost. Um, but he hasn't given me an exact price yet. I'm hoping they're more than like two or three thousand dollars. It'll just be labor. We bought the CAT six.
Okay. Do we, do you need a motion, or we want to wait on the price?
Uh, well, we need to get it done like this week, because Lauren's been in, um, so if you guys just give the authorization, if it, if it comes back some insane number, I'll get a hold of you all, but I don't think it's going to be anything crazy.
Hear a motion?
I make a motion.
I'll second it.
You might approve it also, it's got to be done.
Um, and the final thing is, we got a court security grant for the courthouse for access control and, um, a new NVR and a couple of cameras. Um, I am working on that. We do need to buy the NVR, the but we shouldn't talk about that in public. Um, I can talk to you about that later. Um, long story short, we got to buy a new NVR though, um, that'll be work, but I'll talk to you guys about that. Um, I've got an executive session scheduled for the end, um, we'll throw that in there, because that's a court scare, that's a scary matter.
You can help?
No.
Okay, uh.
Well, I guess you add in there the shelving, which I'm very glad you have Jeremiah and his crew doing it, because it's already taken, it's going to take two weeks when they thought it was only going not being involved, so it's going to probably be the rest of this week yet to get the rest of the shelving in place.
Then everything comes off the floors.
Well, it goes for.
Floors.
I mean, I don't know if everything's.
Well, a lot of it.
Yeah, we still got a lot, like I said, we brought about one fourth of it over, because we still have the vault down, the judge's office, we have the, uh, vault down in the furnace room, I have the box in the jury room, I have all of my kitchen, all of the front office, my office, and the stuff from the records in the shed.
I did the sliding.
Yeah, well, that's, they're, they're supposed to come the twenty-seventh now, that we're supposed to come yesterday.
Yes, so he's not actually giving a definite on the twenty-seventh yet.
Right.
I mean, he's kind of questionable on the twenty-seventh. So.
So we're hopeful, because a lot of stuff is supposed to go in there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, but he said weather, manufacturing delays. But, because that room is completely useless, we can't do anything in there, because it's even getting a floor as part of that.
And I talked to you about the kitchen cabinets.
I thought you were about the kitchen cabinets.
I don't know whether I should do that or just apply on the counter.
I don't see an issue if you just don't want to do it. Before you buy it, does the other offices need cabinets?
I don't know.
That's, we already checked.
That one's sad anything?
I think they're pretty much in, but this is going to be for my storage room.
Yeah, but we need to check it, because if the, if Jill or somebody needs it, we might.
Yeah, if I use my car, I can get a discount, but if I use mine, if I get a discount, I just need to make sure we reimburse me for those purchases. It's probably going to be close to
I don't know.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
I don't know if we can write a version.
But I can, if I use my, if I buy, if I buy them on my car, then I can probably save about five hundred dollars.
Is this the first, like, first for you, buying something new for your office?
I take everybody else's junk, but I usually, you know, cost wise, you know, to save money, I usually just use everybody else's junk, but this is going into the, this will be the storage room, and this will go with all of our supplies. So I went down and looking at the kitchen cabinets to stop, but they haven't stopped nothing customized or anything. Um, like I said, right now I can save twenty percent if I purchase them.
To your personal part. Dutch, are you good with reimbursing her? I am.
Yeah, I am.
Okay, not going to get this word out.
And yeah, ask the other elected if they need anything too. Of course, Krista probably won't know that.
No, Krista has, until she gets that.
She won't know, she gets that to mess over there.
Yeah, we're talking on Thursday, Krista wants her floor plan changed, so it's not new cat, it's allowed. I don't think it's going to be a high cost, but.
What's she want to change?
Um, so well, I mean, we're talking about it on Thursday at the building commission, but if really want to talk, just get the draw, man, I'll show you.
Oh, did, yeah, I said, maybe a motion now. Did you make a motion on that, Dutch?
No, there wouldn't have been a motion made.
Okay.
I make a motion, maybe reverse.
I'll second.
So, the original drawings, Krista was supposed to have her current office, Lauren's current office and Lauren's vault. She was going to use Lauren's vault as a vault, and then those two offices as offices, and then Lauren, like her actual personal office, was going to be a breeze way to connect the two. Um, she asked originally if we could put service windows in the vault wall that goes out to the main hallway. Um, talked to Tom about that, and we cannot do that, because they'd have to be fire rated.
Eighteen inches.
Jeremiah, Jeremiah was willing to do it, and he was just going to do it, like it wasn't going to be a thing at all. However, those windows would have to be fire rated, which means we'd have to get a fire shutter that would drop automatically with the alarm because of that stairwell. So instead, I think what, she doesn't, she wants all of her girls together. So she's not going to, she doesn't want the breezeway in anymore. Where her current office is, she's going to put her public terminal in a waiting table for like the officers and stuff during grand jury. And then she's just going to use Lauren's current personal office as a workroom, and then where all of Lauren's girls are, for three of her girls, and then her and Erica are going to go back in the vault. Um, so basically, the biggest change is we're doing away with the breezeway. Well, again, we got to get pricing, I'm, I'm not saying this, any of this is happening, uh, but we're doing away with the breezeway and then putting a countertop, like when you walk into Lauren's office where the girls are, they would put, still be service windows here, and this would be the public area, uh, and then her girls.
But the cost might outweigh itself, because if they're not having to do the breezeway, they're not having to cut through that, and then also in the clerk's current, county clerk's current space, they were going to have to box in an office space for the public terminals, but now she's just going to put the public terminals on her current side. So in place of that, she's just putting a counter, so one cost for the other may balance out.
Yeah, so that's what we're hoping is that it'll balance out, because there was some stuff like that vault wasn't getting carpet, because it was going to be a vault, but, um, now that she, the, the carpet in her current office is in okay shape, so if it's just going to be a public terminal and a waiting room, we can just move the carpet that was planned to go in there to the vault, and the vault can get new carpet, and we can move some of the finishing.
Is that carpet glued down in her vault?
I believe so.
You're not going to tear that, if it's moved down, you want to.
It's part of the contract, they have to tear it up and level it.
No, 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 I mean, you can't reuse the carpet.
Oh, no, 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 new carpet. There was new carpet.
And one other question I got there, now, I don't know if you recall this, but there's supposed to be a door back in there around the break room, into the courtroom, is it ranked?
Yes.
Oh, right there, it's okay.
If, in the future, if we get the grant money, then they were going to flip the jury box.
Yeah, a ramp.
So that way the jury never has to walk in front of anybody who goes to the jury room, that would be right there by the jury room, which is why Krista wants one on the opposite side of the room, because then they, she didn't have to walk in front of.
And I get that.
Yeah.
I definitely appreciate that.
And the way the current plan is, two of her employees are one side of the hall, two of her employees are on the other side, so, or her and another employee. So you got somebody off, you have somebody by themselves, or if you have two people off, you have one person on each side, it just doesn't work.
Now, is the judges still want to stay up in here?
His suite is not changing. We actually are opening bids for the second judge's suite this morning.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, it's saying it's not changing.
Yeah, we stay.
Judge Curry will stay up there, not things, he did not want anything to change about his suite. Uh, that's basically, there's storage or, no, it's just an open space, so like when they have grand jury and stuff, they put food and stuff in there, so they figured they could just push it back in that corner.
Or is the ju- if they reverse it, where's the jury room? Again, but they're still believing, basically, we're checking.
Yeah, but the jury box would move over here.
That's what I'm saying, okay, you're going to.
And then when they, the jury leaves, they'll go straight into that room, instead of having to walk right in front of the defendant.
Everybody. Yes, well, there was a set of plans at one point that flipped this, so that the courtroom didn't have to change, but Judge Curry did not want his, um, suite, which I understand, and so we will just have to, at some point, we'll have to look at flipping the courtroom and see what that'll cost. Honestly, like that jury box needs rebuilt anyways, so rather than moving the jury box, we just need to build.
Rebound probably around ninety-seven, ninety-eight.
Eighteen?
No.
I'm just teasing, with the chairs, about to flip over the back of those, when you said.
Yeah, well, and there's like rock spots that they fixed out and stuff, so.
I never realized that place was that bad.
He's on the first floor.
He'll be on the first floor.
And we're winning this on that one. Yeah, there's, yeah, we can do that. Hey, I can show you more codies next week.
But you also walked through with Krista the other day, so you understand where she's coming from, and it makes more sense to have her staff on one side of the hall than a five and a half. I believe the public in the suite.
I agree. I think we, we just need to make sure we do it right.
Right, yes.
Don't do it half hearted, oh, yeah, no, I think what she's asking is absolutely reasonable, I don't.
You need a motion to.
No, because the building commission's gotta discuss it on Thursday, we gotta get pricing from, um, Fair Chance to see if they say. So Lauren just pointed out nine o'clock is the scheduled bid opening for, um, the second judge's suite this morning.
Yeah.
Um.
You go.
Well, we don't have any sealed bids, um, however, I've always just done that, like, if someone chooses to email the bid to me, it doesn't affect us, it just takes away the possibility of their competitiveness against other people, so we've always been willing to accept them, um. One, which is good, um, because that means we can do this part of the contract. Um, the single bidder is Fair Chance Construction at seventy seven thousand, two hundred and thirty nine dollars, this is for the second judge's suite built out. Um, now, with that being said, we did receive sixty one thousand, seven hundred and ninety one dollars in courthouse facility grant funds for this project, so the commission is on the hook for fifteen thousand, four hundred and forty eight dollars, um. This was published as required by law, um, class two legal was put out, a formal bid package was put out, um, Fair Chance is the only bidder, um, the way we will process this, we're not gonna do an individual construction contract, we will process a successive change order on the contracts, since they are the winning bidder, um, but we just need to, we need a motion, um, to accept this bid, like I said, you all are on the hook for fifteen thousand of it, because we received just shy of sixty two thousand in grant funds for it.
And then the grant was sixty one.
Uh, can you read the number at the top?
Sixty one, seven ninety one.
Seven ninety.
Mm-hmm, and we're on the hook for fifteen four four eight.
Which that's, the courthouse facilities grants an eighty twenty, so that's, that's our twenty percent.
Yeah. And the bid to do it was seventy seven.
Yes, seven two two thirty nine.
Uh, did I hear a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I second it, and I approve that also.
When will they start on that?
Immediately, forty, forty five days. Okay, um, I'll have to touch, I'm sure they will not start till Jeremiah comes back.
He's away, isn't he, he's still away.
Yeah, that's what, a lot of this project is pending on me getting out, they can't start on Krista's vault until I'm out, they can't start on the judge's thing until I'm out, they can't start in the jury room until I'm out. I got my stuff all over the place, they can't start down, downstairs in the furnished room, my stuff's down there.
Where you plan on being at?
I'm doing my best, I am literally doing my best.
You had a lot of stuff to move.
Yeah.
And while, like, you think you will be now?
Well, my shelving not coming this week is really like throwing a real wrench in it, because I moved the stuff over, that I moved over with the thought that the shelving was going to replace, and then that stuff was gonna go on the shelving, leaving space for the other stuff to come in, now that stuff is sitting there waiting for the shelving, I can't put items in where the shelving's going, because it is just gonna be in the way, so we're just gonna.
Cut it over, I mean, where the.
We don't wanna move the.
Boating machines, so.
Oh, that room is full.
Yeah, now that's record books, so now they're getting the shelving, they got the, most of the exterior shelving attached to the walls, the cans and the drawers, so I can start putting some of those, you know, the books back, and the cans back, and that will open up some space, um, but we're just gonna move around as much as we can, and then like I said, I know it's gonna be starting a judge's thing, I'll focus down there, I get that stuff out, and then just trying to, we're just trying to do the best we can.
You need any more help?
I get, I was just gonna add that Doug and Isaiah and Lily and Carson and Joey have really been doing a great job moving that stuff back and forth, they have had their hands.
Do you need more help?
I don't know that they can actually have more in hand, I mean, because you have to, they load it, they take the stuff out of the office, they load the trailer, they move the trailer over, then they unload it, you can only do so much.
Well, um, and, uh, thank God for Doug, because he has, he doesn't even work for maintenance, but he is absolutely, he can lead on that, and, and a blessing, because he has taken care of all of it, keeping the guy, keeping everybody rounded up and doing it, because like Jeff, I don't even have him moving stuff, because there's still stuff breaking every single day, um.
Well, I said, this stuff's been heavy, it's, it's, it's asked a lot of him and them, I mean, they put the books in the gray toes, and I mean, he barely moved the gray toes, I mean, they were, it was extremely heavy, um, so I hate to tell them that there's more books in the shed yet to move this week, so.
But now your vault's big enough to hold everything.
Probably, you know what, but we're, we're gonna make, we're gonna work it out.
You're not gonna bring the boot and stuff over though, or? Only at the sheds.
The machines are coming over, that's the idea of that room.
Well, I thought they were.
Yeah, you've got six hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment in the shed that needs to be over here in a controlled atmosphere.
I agree.
So, once all this stuff comes over, I'm using that room right now just to get the stuff out of the courthouse, so they can start, that's the other thing, they can't work the electrical, because the electrical stuff's in my office, which is why I had to move my stuff back at Thanksgiving, um, so, which is why you haven't had minutes, and I could have had minutes, so Thanksgiving is when my first batch had to get moved out of there, and it's just kind of drawn on, it'll probably be February before we get everything out, um, but yeah, we're just, we're trying to move things along as best as we can to not hold up the project.
Well, and then, like, this week, they, we have people, but they lost three days, because there was court yesterday, there's grand jury today, and then Thursday's family court, we can't move during family court, because the elevator noise issue at the moment, um, which has become substantially better, but there's still some work to be done. Well, they insulated the walls, and I'm not sure they didn't slow the elevator, um, motor down, we stood in there the other day and had a conversation, while it's running, it's still loud, it did help, but there's, they're gonna have to do some more work still.
So, I was saying, there is one piece of shelving equipment that's in the back stairwell that they haven't got up, says to, it's eleven and eleven foot, seven inches, and it, they went, were trying to take it up the first stairwell, so there's only one piece of shelving yet to make in it.
I knew that was gonna be a mess.
Oh, and everything was covered in coal dust too, so.
Coal dust?
Well, yeah, because I mean.
Oh, it's been cold, I get it.
Well, the, from the, uh, railroad, and then I guess we had a coal furnace.
Yeah, that's what they said, they just spark fires here.
I'm not so certain that there wasn't, I don't hold any of this, but there may have been a stove in that vault at some point.
In your vault?
It might have been, because when they took the shelving out, there was a bunch of burnt matches, like, I guess if somebody was like lighting a stove or something, like underneath in the corner, and some of the underneath, it's kind of weird. So my only concern is maybe they had a.
There's no, you don't see no fluid outlet for a stair.
Well, I don't know.
Of course, back in the eighteen hundreds.
That's the same, eighteen hundreds, that's what I was thinking.
Well, like, there's been new windows put in and all kinds of things, so.
Yeah.
Did you see the three coins pressed?
Yeah, yeah. That's how we know the date.
I can't read them, I looked.
Were they actual coins, or just the?
It's just press, the coin itself isn't in there, but the plaster, uh, they could, they, uh, press the coin in, and that's where you can see the eighteen ninety one date.
You cheated. I couldn't.
Hey, I'd like to see whatever we do with that wall, if we take that plaster out, I'd like to cut that square out and keep that, if we could frame it in something and keep, and maybe preserve that, I think that's, uh, that'd be something good to keep.
Yep, I agree.
I don't know how bad it's gonna crack when it, because one piece already busted, so the one piece we have to read the date, the corner of it's chipped off.
We need to try to, if we could.
Yeah, we need to try to, but that's what I'm afraid to, I'm afraid the plaster's just gonna all bust and crack whenever it comes apart, but we'll try to do something.
All right. So. The news judge suite, right?
Doctor, yes.
You're good with that, okay, so we're on, and, um.
Are we done on the bid stuff then?
Yeah, that's all we got on the bid.
At nine thirty, Sally Martin will be here to do her.
Okay, you got anything on the room, update on the project?
Um, well, the amphitheater, you all have to make a decision on that.
I know we talked a little bit about rebidding, what do you, what do you guys think? I know what's gonna happen if we don't do something over here.
We, we have to re, we have to, uh, make a decision today.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're, we're supposed to go under construction within six months of the contract, and we signed the contract four months ago.
I'm not in favor, I'm not in favor of the prices, I'm not in favor of putting more, more county money out there, um, even, I know what they said about, and I, and I have a problem with that too, because they said that they would up it, and we could make changes, and they would, we could possibly only have to cover half of it, but then what if the information's wrong, and we still have, we have to come out with three hundred thousand instead of a hundred and fifty, so honestly, I'm not in favor of moving forward right now with it.
Well, and, um, real quick, just for clarification on that, what we would have to do, um, so we'd have to confirm the bid hold period, and if it fall, if it's a ninety day, then I would fill out a supplemental application, they would send that to, um, Parks, which is not our Parks, but NPS, who does LWECF, um, and they would approve or deny the additional funds before we would award the contract, but no matter what, we'll still be on the hook for an additional eighty five thousand on top of the one fifty we budgeted, so you'll be looking at two thirty five minimum. But we wouldn't award the contract until after we were guaranteed the funds, that is, that is one, just wanted clarification there, I also, I would go to say.
I'm not like, being like, I don't say none of the word used, I don't agree or anything, but when this project is actually done, is it going to bring us a good amount of revenue in? It's not gonna pay for itself.
Um, we don't know. No, well, at four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, there's no way, um, because the seating capacity alone is not enough to, um, substantiate of an actual return on the investment, like, when we were looking a couple years ago to Country Music Festival, you're talking twenty five thousand dollars for any half decent, like, band that would bring substantial numbers of people, um, and the seating capacity there, you couldn't even, unless you sold the tickets for astronomical numbers, you couldn't even pay for the band with the seating capacity that's available, is the problem, so there will, in my opinion, that it's more of a community project, community, like, with, with, there's no return financial.
Not a lot of return, there'll be a little bit, not a lot, the return will be the citizens hopefully being grateful. Well, the return would be if you're selling tickets and stuff, stuff to get over there, there's not gonna be a lot.
But this is something like Apple Valley Plan for Music again?
Well, this, that's one of the. Well, so I spoke to Rotary last week, and the amphitheater came up, and Donna said Apple Valley would love to use it. However, here's the problem, this is only phase one, and this amphitheater is nowhere near ready for use for that type of production at phase one. Um, it requires another seven hundred thousand dollars, based on estimates that were a hundred and seventy low for phase one, hun, yeah, a hundred and seventy low for phase one, so you're probably looking at at least another million dollars to get into what's going, because there's no dressing rooms, the stage isn't as wide as it used to be, there's not a backstage area, um, all of the same production stuff's not there, like, you're talking, and we could continue to get fifty percent funding, for sure, like LWECF, I, I feel sure will continue to allocate funds, however, you're still talking hundreds of thousands of dollars out of the county's general budget every year to get those through those phases, and I don't know that that's realistic from a budget standpoint to get it continued through those phases.
But now that we've applied, if we don't use it, we're at the bottom of the list for.
That is correct, yes, um, I sent you all that email, so you could read the wording directly, um, but yes, we would be at, like I spoke about on, at the meeting on the second, if we now turn down this grant, we will be at the bottom of the list for future applications for LWCF, which is probably the largest source of park spot in the state.
Well, if we don't do it, what, what's intentions with this grant?
We have to give it back.
No, what, what is the intention to using this, so we won't be at the bottom of the list?
We'll only use it if we build the amphitheater, we have, we have to do project, we can't use it anywhere else.
Can't use, no place else over at the park.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, sorry, and it has, like, and it's the construction documents we provided them is exactly what it has to be used for, like, we can't even go back to the drawing board and redo the amphitheater again.
When I know when the health partner rebid that building, they can end up a lot better than what, what it did at the first bid, I think we're, we're not out enough. Are we? Did we bid?
I did, we're not out of anything, but we only have two months.
Yeah, I know, but we can get that done.
I mean, we can rebid, but I um, I mean, that's up to you all, I can't imagine, it's, like, I think no matter what, you're gonna have it over, you're gonna have to be willing to accept.
So if we rebid, then we're committed to doing more future projects, which is gonna lead to millions, a million dollars. Well, but we won't, but we won't lose the hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
You're losing one fifty, but we've also budgeted one fifty that you could either use for other projects in the parks, or could just go back into whatever other use you found necessary, because there is one fifty in the budget that's allocated, but, I mean, that could also, that would be money saved, that you wouldn't have to, you don't have to use for anything else, but you also could use to do other projects, because the county is also allocated one fifty.
What do you wanna do, Dutch, Jason?
So, so, I'll, honestly, my opinion, um, I, I can't, I cannot see or justify putting money into an amphitheater right now. Uh, I don't know as much money as we're gonna have to put into it, even, even if it is just a fifty percent match, um, I don't know that we're gonna get it back out, uh, and even, and even getting uh, events in there and getting the public to be able to use it, I don't know that we're gonna be able to get it back out. And the way everything else is going right now, I feel like, you know, we don't have an overabundance of money, um, and I feel like we could use this hundred and fifty thousand that we've already budgeted either in a park someplace else, or for something else, uh, I know we're gonna get banged on any future grants, but my opinion is to not do this and not move forward with it right now.
Um, two, real quick, more points that I finish, um, for what Parks wants to use it for, we could just as easily buy a tractor and trailer stage that's mobile, and spend a hundred and thirty less thousand dollars to have a nice tractor and trailer stage, because the only thing we would use it for is music nights, um, and then the second point would be the survey, it was very ranked very low as a community priority. Um, sorry, this isn't me trying to talk you in or out of it, but I felt like I needed to make those last two points, whatever you all decide to deal. What's your thoughts?
Hey, and, hey, let me, let me add in here too, that, uh, I know there's some people that are involved with Apple Valley, and some people that involved, been involved with the productions over there over the years, and I was part of that back in the eighties, late eighties, early nineties, I was involved in McNeil's Rangers and all that, and it was a great thing at the time, and it worked really well, but I just don't feel like that's something that's gonna be successful right now for the amount of money that we will have to put into that to, to be able to get anywhere.
I, I agree with Dutch, the only other thought I have is there's just, uh, there's things that the county provides for people that there is no return in the parks and so forth, so.
You're correct.
And, uh, that's my only thought there.
Yeah, because our sports complex, there's no return, we don't charge youth leagues, anything like that, you're right, there is no return on that stuff, that's, that's part of what we do, is providing services.
Thousands of people use it.
The, the sports, yeah.
Sports, yeah.
But also, look where a hundred and fifty thousand dollars could go if you decided to use it on other parks projects, if we end up with these north end parks, or even the renter, even just could, heck, if used, fifty thousand on parks, what we've done with very little in parks in the last couple of years, fifty thousand dollars could go a long way, a hundred and fifty could go forever.
I agree.
Hey, so, we're in a level, guys.
Well, there needs to be a formal motion that you're not, because I'll, I'll need to write a letter to LWECF today, if I don't know what we are, what you know.
Consideration our current project, like where we are.
Um. So, I, I, I will put it in the letter, and I had already put it in the email, I sent the whole thread to the commissioners, I showed a printed for the record, um, but I, I put all of that in writing to them, and he didn't seem to care, um, he even called me, and we talked for probably thirty minutes, and I kept saying like, because he said, you know, you guys applied for this, it needs to be a priority, and I said, it is a priority, we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for it, like, that's a priority for people with a seven or eight million dollar budget, however, it doesn't change the fact that we have other things we need to do, we still have to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, like, just because we said this was a priority, doesn't mean it's a priority to the point where we'll spend two million dollars on that, like, every priority. Like, every priority has an end to its burden. So I will absolutely reflect all that in the letter again. But I don't even know what project we would apply for next through them, because it's only a fifty percent match, and it adds a ton of requirements.
I'll make a motion that we uh reject all the bids and and put this project on the back burner or stop it or however you want to word it.
And so. Reject all bids and formally decline the L W C F funding.
Correct, yes, reject all bids and formally decline of the uh grant funding.
I second it. Alright. So we'll move on with that. Update on the C B C D V G Health Department.
Oh, I don't have anything, I'm sorry, um.
Man, contract work in the health department.
Yeah, oh, yes, I do. Sorry, I was typing in a trailer on that distract here, I do. You wanna take that, it's written to Jerry, because that's. Sorry.
Our bill will be, he's the lowest bidder at three million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And uh. That was Bob Briggs at thirty, so.
Sorry, I'm sorry, three million.
Here, I'll give this to you. That's for the new health department building that's going in. Okay. Do we need to accept that?
Um, yeah, let me see exactly, I think Kim just needed us to formally. Accept it and approve the contract, let me make sure exactly what she said. Yep, she just needs you to vote um to approve the contract and.
That number, Dutch. Three million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred.
Yes. I'll make a motion, or did you already make a motion?
Oh, no. Did you second, I'll second, and I approve that also, okay. Opioid update. We'll get you in here.
You're fine.
You you good sitting there for a couple? Okay, soon as this is over, we'll get you opioid update.
I I don't have anything right now, like I said earlier, I'm I'm behind. On a lot of this stuff, uh, what's this about Lipitor settlement, it says on the.
On there, because uh there's been stuff on the list, sir, where counties have got a letter about a settlement. But it's a Lipitor settlement, it was something to do with Lipitor out of. I don't, I don't remember what the other long name for this, um, but that was. Between May of or two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, it wasn't available or something, so a settlement was made. And counties are receiving money and somebody put on a list, and they're like, oh yeah, that's opioid money, and then it got to the top, and there was not opioid money, it's not part of the settlement. It's a completely different settlement, the uh auditor's office is already involved in this and they're gonna give us guidance. As to whether it's just going to the general county, hopefully we're not having to set up a new fund and all that good stuff.
Have we received any official correspondence on that?
No, so I don't know if all counties are in on this or just certain, because we have not received a letter, a lot of counties have.
Have we, have we received an updated or a new check or anything, have have we received anything? Because last year was at December thirty first, we received that first check, I. I was expecting by the end of the year, we would have received another check, I guess we haven't received anything yet.
At this time, we we get one, I will have it as a correspondence.
Okay, I I guess I should add, while I was down here, uh, I probably had a. Thirty minute conversation yesterday with Matt Harvey, who is uh over the West Virginia First Foundation. Um, and had a had a good conversation with him about a lot of things going on in the state. And a lot of things going on with the First Foundation, so. Um, they're, they they've got the ball rolling now and and looking forward to some other announcements and some other things coming up for that.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
Okay, well, it's cushioned up nine thirty if you're ready.
And do you want me to stand there?
Well, whatever you want to do, it's.
We put the podium there, but you're certainly.
I like to get nice and quickly, so. Of course, we did get the audit. Yeah, has it already been like, have you already done your first one? Okay. So they don't actually have it yet, okay. Um, so most of y'all know me, but I'm Sally Martin from the State Auditor's Office. And I did the audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, so that would be July first of twenty-two to June thirtieth of twenty-three. Um, so I audited. The governmental activities, the aggregate discreetly presented component units, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information of the county. And then also under the same cover, I audited Farm Land Protection Board and Parks and Recreation. Um, so your opinion on the financial statements was unmodified, which is the best opinion you can get, like, that's what you want. Um, so that basically means that your financial statement was materially correct. And covered everything and included everything that it needed to cover. Um, there were some findings. So I'm just gonna, they're in the audit report. And um, some of them are.
Repeat offenders.
Yeah, I think they're both actually repeats. So one of them was the remittance of fees collected in the county clerk's office, which was a repeat.
It's supposed to be a month and then I do not give it a better.
My second finding was a major fund classification and it was because the U S D A project fund was not properly identified as a major fund. On the financial statements, uh, when I checked that out, the. Uh worksheet that the financial statement preparer used to determine her major funds had a formula error in it.
And what fund was it?
The U S D A project fund, um, so I actually did talk to her about like, hey, your. Your worksheet's wrong, so when she put all the funds in and was relying on her worksheet to tell her what major funds. There wasn't a formula in that fund to tell her that it was a major fund, so that's how it got missed. Um, so basically, I just added it as a major fund, but one of our standards does say that all the major funds have to be identified on the financial statement. And the last one was the circuit clerk's account balance list, which has been an ongoing issue. And that has to do with the bank account that they're waiting on a release from the judge in order to release the money. Um, and I've actually spoken to her about just including it on the balance that she gives me, and that should correct that problem, because. I just need to see that they know that the money is there and who it belongs to. Uh, and they weren't doing that, they were just giving me the list of their current. Um, boy, or yeah, their current balances, but they were not acknowledging that extra money.
The pre-existing.
Yes, so I think that I've um helped her like bring that, it's a pretty simple version, it's just it wasn't being done. And so that's all the findings that I had. Um, in the prior year, we had a depository collateral problem, but that was corrected. And then there was a failure to submit a budget revision to appropriate the general county budget into the next year, but that was also corrected.
And the budget collateralization shouldn't be a problem anymore, because everything's at First United and they are. Way on top of that, they send budget requests constantly.
Yeah, I think she gets them like every month.
Yeah, Chris does, and then the building commission wants I do, and we get, yeah, we get involved a lot.
Yeah. I did go over audit adjustments with Lauren and Kim and they were approved. And as part of the audit report that you guys are gonna get, there is a management letter included in that. It's not actually part of the audit report because it's not released to the public. But it is something for you guys to look at, and I have already talked to Lauren about the issues, and I have already talked to Luke about the issues. Um, so I don't want to bring that open publicly, but just make sure that you look at the, what we call the management letter. Uh, that's included. Did you see it in there, but it's like.
Was it actually a single letter or party on it?
It should be a single letter, not, it's not.
So I have it in my emails, the draft, but I didn't have.
Oh, I'll get the office to send you one, if it wasn't included, it should have been included in the packet with the audit.
Then I usually make a copy of that letter and a copy of this for the notebooks, and I didn't have a letter to copy.
Okay, I'll get the office to send you, to send you one, and then you can make sure they get it, okay, because I saw what they need to.
Yeah, they.
It wasn't a draft that I sent you guys, and then we talked. Right, um, so it should have been included in the audit report, so I'll make sure we, our office sends you one, but it was, it's things that were. So whenever we find an issue in an audit, we can do three things. We can have a discussion, so if it's something minor, it's not a big deal, we can go to the person and just have a conversation with them and say. You know, we saw this, this isn't quite what you should be doing, so you need to do this instead. Um, we can do a management letter, which is a little bit worse than a discussion, but it doesn't come to the point that we feel like it needs to be a finding. And be uh included in the audit report, so that's what um I'm talking about, that level. And then, of course, then you get the ones that we determine our material or they're pervasive or something like that, and it needs to be included in the audit report.
And all of those things, the letter, like Sally and I talked about, the ones, like, because one was basically was my fault, um. And we've addressed that, and then e- everything that's in there, we've been working on, and as soon as you get the letter, we can look at that and discuss it.
Yeah, I just don't want to bring it up in public, because it's not part of the audit report.
Right.
But I did want to make sure that you were aware that there was a letter that you should like look at. Um, so that's all I have, does anybody have any questions?
Everything, other than that, everything.
Yes, everybody here is always very helpful, I have a nice workspace, and I don't have any trouble getting information from people and good records.
Uh, yeah, and we learn, we learn as every year goes on, um, we try to improve, should point things out and. And the the tenth of the month thing isn't that I'm not for lack of trying to get it in by the tenth, there's things come up. collections and such, um, but yeah, every year, um, I think we've improved, made improvements and expanded on things and. Yeah, I think we're pretty good.
It's definitely much better than when I started with the audits.
What are you starting our next one?
Um, I need to talk to you, make sure you're gonna be available, but I should be here the beginning or the middle of February.
The middle of February I leave, um, then I'll be back.
Will you be here? Like, middle and end of March, you know, that's when I'm always tracking, tracking down.
Yeah, then I'll absolutely be here then, I just take off the last two weeks of February.
Okay.
Dutch, your name on there?
Um, no, that's fine, I'll just put the he was but by uh.
Because our First United has already asked for it, like the issued version.
Yeah.
Since our interim lender, um, so they've already asked for the twenty-four audit.
And we have to have an issue by March thirty-first. Apparently, there's a grant, um, you have a grant that has to have it? That's what I was told.
Is that the definitely L W C F?
It's definitely possible.
I don't know, I have two, like, I'm I'm doing one right now, that's actually a two-year, but it has to be issued by March thirty-first, which is why I won't be there till.
Right, L W C F and the U S D A one, we're supposed, like, we're supposed to have those audits in within.
Yeah, I don't know, I was told that I had two counties that we couldn't do the alternate procedures on, like we did last year, that we had to have the audits issued by March thirty-first.
Over ARPA?
Well, we did the, it, like, the ARPA allowed us to do the A C.
Right.
But I was told that that wasn't an option this year, because. This county and another county had to have their single audits issued by March thirty-first, like, we couldn't do the A Cs on it. So I don't know what brand it is, but apparently there's something that you guys have, that they, our office was told they had to have it issued by March thirty-first. Unless she just told us that's a good time, I don't know. I don't know what it is exactly, I was just told that it had to be an issue, that I have to do a single and it has to.
I'm not sure which one that would be, but it's, okay.
They issue but thirty-first, you mean completed?
Yeah.
This year.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, I started hoping to have the office together by February.
Start seeing your stuff ready as you're moving, like, just put my stuff in a box.
Be here till February.
No, as you're getting stuff ready, just put my stuff in a box.
Oh, that's all in boxes.
Okay.
Everything's hot. Hundreds of boxes.
No, yeah, like. No, I haven't. Uh, yeah, I just started the audit that I had to do, a two-year audit, I just started last week, okay.
We'll start looking for. Anything with that day to put it in the board.
Yeah, like, I actually worked into, which is not unusual for me, if anybody knows me, but I worked until ten eleven o'clock last week and worked the weekend. So, yeah, my my uh director actually came from. She lives in Somersville, and she actually came up to help me last week, but she had to be back in the office, because you never have any auditor, so she had to be back down there, so, yeah. So that's our goal. Sorry, Lauren.
Have them send us the letter, can you have them send the audit, the issue, final issued audit eventually to?
I can send you that digitally.
Yeah, can you do that, please?
Yeah, it's online.
Oh, it's already uploaded?
I I have it, they put it in my binder, so I know I have it, so I can send it to you. But I'll have to contact them, I don't have a copy of the official letter, I maybe I do, I'll check, I might actually have it, but I can send it all to you.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Dutch, you got any questions?
No, we just something.
I do not.
Thank you, have a good day.
You too.
I don't know exactly, because I do have to get this audit done, that I'm working on. Uh, my goal was to get it to the end of January, but I I have to wait until the middle of February, I'm watching the good question. I think I'm just center, she'll have pretty well.
Alright, I'll let you know once I. Well, as soon as Kim gets done with that, we choose, then I'll have her.
Yeah, but I'll let you know, like. Oh, because, you know what, we didn't know anything, so I'm like, you know, I should know. Like, I'll let you know as soon as I know for sure. But the phone hold out people, everybody that hold out. I'm sorry. But yeah, I'll let you know as soon as I know, I'm sure, as soon as she's done, we do, so I'll have her, alright, thanks.
That's for the most part, we know what you need.
Okay. Update on the town of Ridgefield.
I've just been leaving that on there, just.
Dutch, you got anything on town originally update?
I I spoke with uh Noah Weber from D E P, who I've met with down there, well, in the property. Uh, right after the first year, I spoke with him on the phone, he has not heard anything from the property owners. Um, I I tried to get ahold of, I have a number for the mother. Um, tried to call her, but she didn't answer, um, now we have all this snow. So everything's covered up with snow down here, nobody can see it, so that's a good thing, but. That didn't solve the problem, um, but I haven't talked with them to to get an update as to what the the owner's plans are. But I know they haven't reached out to Noah and the D E P yet.
Alright. Uh, regarding the war memorial, you, I haven't talked to, uh.
One concern is he wanted to know how much space they have to work with.
So, well, do we know, so I I. I text him Friday and said, I've not forgotten about you, um, because he did call me. And ask. Number one, how much space does he have to work with? Number two, how hard is the current memorial to take apart? And number three, will we be paying for the concrete work um for the memorial? So, first question, space comes down to if you all were doing the plaza or not. Um, I don't have pricing on that plaza to be able to tell you what it's gonna cost. But that's gonna depend if it goes in that plaza, or if it goes where it is, if it goes where it presently is, then we know the space comp plan, if it goes in the plaza. You'll just have to decide, there's a large, there's a much larger space available.
And once you're, what's area are you calling the plaza?
Let me just go grab those plans too, they're all.
I would assume the plaza was the whole price. Public court house.
Run like all the way to the other side, or just that? Where the handicap parking is around the new addition, I don't know how.
So. This will be the front door, and then just this whole area there, basically, where the handicap parking was before.
Okay, so nothing's gonna be in this area right here?
Well, this, there's, there's already existing concrete there, so basically it'll don't be repainted. We could, my goal is to put Riverhawk and stuff in there, um, but. this is, so Dutch, I'll give it up to the camera in a second. So this is the new plaza, it's basically where the handicap parking was before, and it would be concrete all through here and then this area. Well, we're gonna have a lot of.
We don't, we're at a party across the street. But we don't know exactly what everything's causing, what we need to do, did you ever get that letter I asked you about getting? Cause I've talked to a couple people, they got a letter.
Well, right, but Roy didn't want the letter until he knows what we're doing and how much it was gonna cost.
Well.
That's what we talked about the last meeting, not to write the letter till we do what the cost.
All that blacktop needs replacing, it's, it, it had, it was broken up, it was humped up in some areas, both in the area, then they cut it out to, for the drain, I guess the drain line, water line, um. So, I mean, it does need, you're either gonna do blacktop or concrete, concrete would be.
Yeah, the, um, the biggest expense is going to be that area will need some excavating desperately. It's nowhere near level or at grade or.
Was there.
My question.
The tree roots really.
Are they?
Okay.
Are the shoreline runs under here?
Yeah, they just laid some.
Do we really wanna put it over a shoreline, issues that we've been having?
Well, that, that's up to you all, that's why I'm like, I've not even gotten prices on the plaza yet, cause it's so far down the road, but I can sort of work on it. We've been, I've been working on it every day, trying to, like.
They removed the handicap to the other side, is one thing.
So, handicap parking, anyone with a handicap pass can park for free at any meter spot. So those will all, those are all, and we're gonna put, um, probably a marked spot or two in one of those lots.
Hopefully this little area be near where the cars.
Actually, that's a handicap spot there, that's what this is, that, those are going to be have spots, they're just on the side of those.
What about this area?
That's a loft that where the parking is now, can be. Yeah, so this, this is gonna be nothing, um, Tom had mentioned putting the sidewalk in, but I didn't figure you all would wanna spend the money on that, so I said we could put some sort of, um, cause I guess everybody over there has mentioned they'd like to have an outdoor area to eat lunch and sit. Um, I figured it could be as simple as putting, like, we could get nice looking rectangle planters. Well, yeah, by the front door, uh, we could get nice looking rectangle paw, um, planters and just put across there to separate that area, but.
Will this memorial go over here as well?
No.
No, that one, one's a police memorial.
Yeah.
And then one, yeah. So that one will stay. But I mean, there's nothing saying we can't just continue to use this space, I just need to know what to tell Roy, and if you wanna wait, and I can get a price on that concrete, I mean, I don't know.
To wait on this, cause we don't know how much money's coming in, and I don't, I'm not crazy about putting it over a sure drain, I'll tell you that right now. But plus, trouble we've been having over there.
Yeah.
Either the blacktop or concrete.
I mean, the memorial, or taking.
Oh, not the memorial itself, yeah.
I'm not sure where those lines run, cause I know every guy that's in the street, although they did, there's, the water line comes straight down through here.
But they can, um, put it concrete slabs that could be picked up with their, you know, they gotta work on, there's stuff like that that they do in cities. And more money.
Yeah. So, do you guys want me to work on getting a price on that plaza, or what's your, you're letting me hold up the camera, what you're gonna do? Um, hello, there we go, uh, that's not helpful, is it?
Eh, not really.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, we don't need to make a decision, do they do?
No, I just need to know if I need to get a price or what.
And moving forward, when he's talking to people, what, how much space they have to work with? You just want him limited to the area he has right now, is that?
He wants to put a competition for people to help design, and they need to know the space as well. For people to submit dirty designs or whatever.
So even if they stayed within the oval and make that more of a circle area, it would come kind of into that first parking spot. But it would be all that way enough to the side that if he did have water, sewer line issues.
Well, it can be just easy, as we say, just need to stay within the existing footprint or a foot larger around the existing footprint, I just. I don't know, it's all much more complex than I expected, so.
Yeah, I figured we shouldn't get into it.
Well, everything becomes much more complex.
Cause right now, I need to talk about the concrete pad that's poured around it, if they stay within that spot.
It'd be pretty good.
It'll be a pretty good site.
That'd be decent. But now, and again, here's another question. They're wanting to put a couple statues. Are they gonna put one, are they gonna put four for all different four branches?
Well, that was me talking about statues, I'm not sure if he was.
I know, I, that's what I'm asking, is it room for that?
And that, in the current footprint, there definitely would not be, you don't really have room for that memorial, you'd have to do plaza or something, either that, I don't know.
I guess as far as, you know, kind of designs people present.
The hardest to honor. Sorry, now I'm trying to make decisions.
They have to know the size before they can write up a design, or can we get?
Well, yeah, cause you don't even know what it costs, like, if we're gonna give them five foot more than they have now, that memorial's gonna be.
Well, I don't know, do we even need to, they're gonna mark all the lines to see what is? I mean, I know they just dug the new lines to the left of it.
Yeah.
I don't know that there's anything in the front or the right-hand side. And then I know they haven't dug up the sidewalk.
Oh, I'm sure I have the plans of where those are now, but that's, that's two hundred pages long, and I won't.
Well, and then the.
I guess I could look, I can probably.
The power lines above, will they still just be there, or down, but everything's going underground there too.
I think as long as you, like you mentioned, stay under. But when you put that memorial, it said, it's not just concrete, you're moving, you're moving a memorial.
Yeah, I should, pretty exactly. Yeah, no, I definitely see what you're saying.
That tree was right there, and when the tree fell, it just missed the memorial. One inch kind of straight at the top of it, but it, it. Some of the power.
How much, well, I tell you what, try and see how much we can enlarge it. Uh. Lines and stuff, let's see, I like to give them all they need.
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem either, however, if I'm being completely honest, I'm, I'm way out of my daily weight here, this is not like.
Other thought I had was, can we move it forward, going into the grass area?
As long as there's nothing there either.
Yeah. Then we got the whole courtyard, the whole front there.
Whether it's Comcast or we, right?
So, so I would think that, uh, that kinda give them, I don't wanna say give them a free rein, but I think if they build a memorial, that would be comparable to the names and stuff they wanna put on it, and they determine the size that they would want or need, and then we try to find room, if we can't find room, then they need, then we'll have to cut it down and make it smaller, um. You know, for us to say, this is your area, and this is all you're getting, is ki- I think it's kinda hard for us to answer right now. We have a lot of room out there, there's plenty of room to, to put it. Definitely don't wanna put it over top any utilities, absolutely not, um. That would, that's just asking for problems, and then, uh, but I think if they, I think kinda just kinda give them a, a free rein as to what size they think they need, and go with that, and then we'll try to find the room or and say, nope, it's too big, and, and go with that, uh, uh, that's kinda where I'm at, but.
So, basically tell Roy, give them the room they need, and we will figure it out. That, and that show, that's.
The, that's, that's kinda bit in a nutshell, yeah, that's, that's my opinion anyway, I don't know what the other two commissioners feel, or anybody else feels, but.
So, second question he asked is, um, are we going to provide slab?
Well, when you say, we, this is, we don't know how much money we're gonna raise.
Right, well, but I'm just asking, obviously not me, I, I don't know, like.
Yeah, that would just have to be part of the project, really, I mean, uh, obviously, we're gonna have to put it on a concrete slab or something, uh, pour concrete, whatever, um.
If it gets a price, then the county can decide how much we can give towards it, right?
Well, we may not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so basically, um, tell. Um, so basically tell him, um, use the amount of space they think they need, they will need for an appropriate memorial, and we will figure it out, um. And as far as the concrete slab goes, just go ahead and build it into the project budget, and we will also figure that out, we're gonna contribute.
What do you think size of a slab they would need? What, roughly, what are you looking at, do you have any?
So it depend on the size of the memorial.
Well, I know that, but roughly, do you have any idea now?
I have no idea. I know nothing about this, like, he asked me to go figure out how it's, how to get the old one out of there, and I'm like, I don't even know what I'll do, I was gonna send Jeff over to look at it, but I'm like, I don't even know.
Try to give you an idea.
Okay.
They'll strap it up, laying it down.
Yeah, monument people would, would probably be deal, be doing that. They would know how it comes apart and everything.
I think he want, that, that's what he wanted to know was how it was built. Like, what's? Yeah.
Is there a tag on there as to where it came from, is, do they?
I'll do that, this, but that doesn't mean it's not there.
Another option thinking too, is I know we want to have it, we don't keep it in the location that it's on, because then the idea with the law enforcement is, cause there was two of the same on each side, but now it's not gonna look like the law enforcement. Even if you put it to where the pine tree used to be in front of the law enforcement one. Cause, but that pine tree there, I, I don't know that there's any lines through that area.
I think we're gonna go with that shit, let them figure it out, and we'll try to come up with or actually. Shrink it a little bit.
Yep.
That's your thing I never do.
And then the third. The concrete.
Yeah, the, the concrete and the disassembly. That's everything about all that.
American Rest Week, I got, I got an update.
Um.
That's just cause everything was due March thirty first.
Oh, yeah, everything's been submitted that was due, um, go figure the, the portal the treasury uses. Uh, they specifically told me everything had to be uploaded to that portal, I, there's no place to upload documents anywhere in the portal. Um, so I reached out to their support, and they said, well, we don't know what to tell you, just go ahead, and, and I said, okay. Um, so what do you want us to do, and they said, well, just send us the documents, and, um, we'll figure it out. So I have all those emails where I sent them the documents, and I screenshot everything and put it on file, but everything we needed to do was submitted to treasury, so. And then we'll have a report due in April.
Courtyard facilities.
Much, oh, the. Oh, that's probably from the grant, which we did as an appointment, you already made a motion on that, that would be the bid opening we did.
Oh, okay.
Um, well, back on that though, the ANX walls that we talked about a while back, the metal siding and the purging, you all have thoughts on that?
Uh, probably, probably need to go with the metal siding, I think it would look better, um. And since it's really compared, you compare the price to the purging, as opposed to the metal siding, there is really much cost difference. Um, so I think, I think the metal siding would be better way to go.
So, we're going to be receiving a change order soon for some of the things you all approved, so if you want this, we need, I need to let them know so we can add that into the change order, and it's thirty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-two cents.
As opposed to, doing the purging was what, thirty-one or something like that?
Yeah, it's almost, uh, no, actually, the purging was sixty, or fifty-seven, but it was from a different, yeah. Cause that different danger, he was gonna charge likes, I'd have to pull the exact price, but it was like sixty for the metal siding, or fifty-seven or fifty-eight for the purging, and we, they, the second guy they got a quote from only gave a quote of one metal, he didn't give a bunch.
Oh, okay, that's right, that's right.
Fifty-five.
So, you need, well, you need a motion for that?
Yes, yeah.
I'll make a motion, we, uh, go with the metal siding to the bid for thirty-three thousand.
I second, and I approve that also.
Okay, and just to be clear, I gave you all those construction breakdowns, we are still within our contingency budget. Um, I know it seemed like a lot, um, now this change order will eat away at a lot of that, because this change order include multiple things you all have done, uh, but, just, yeah, so. I guess you, did I give you a copy of that?
I did.
Okay, I can do it in the mission, yeah, I did it right before the end of the year, I'll get you on.
All right, approve the, uh, training date.
Yes.
We're talking about whether it was, it wasn't, then.
Yeah, now they've sent out all the official stuff, it's definitely not that date, it is, uh.
The second term.
Yeah.
Or you say keeping the March twelfth?
I would like to keep March twelfth date, cause that's what we coordinated in, but I just wanted to wait until this meeting to make sure everyone's okay with that.
What time, oh, you don't have all day?
It will be all day, but it'll be, we do have the employees the first half, and then, yeah.
So, I'm sorry, what is this training about, like?
Um, it's just an annual employee training, then, um, we basically just talk about, well, we don't, WD Corps comes and does it for free. Um, sexual harassment, embezzlement, technology, workplace safety, that's basically just.
We have a lot of new employees.
Yeah, it needs to be done. Now, also stress that everybody attends it.
Yeah, there's only a couple offices.
I know, there's a couple that don't.
Yeah.
Well, it'll start at nine, March twelfth, nine o'clock.
I think we usually do eight-thirty to.
I thought it was, give them a little time to get.
I'd have to look, it, it might be like not, it's like two, three and a half hour sessions is what it is.
What day is more cool?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. Okay. Let's take a good feel.
Okay, so we are going, so we are confirmed for March twelve.
Motion to. I have a motion to confirm March, Wednesday, March twelfth is, uh, training day for employees, I made the motion.
I'll second it.
Again, I approve that also.
Good deal, okay, sorry, Jason, we don't close for that or anything, like, they do have the employees in the morning and have the employees the evening. We've, I think one year we closed for lunch, but then we even talked about that, it's not really necessary if people just send their employees on the correct way.
Yeah, the, uh, elected officials, they, yeah.
Uh, they're encouraged.
Everyone should.
Yes, that's exactly, it should, yeah.
We can all take that one aside.
Well, that's what, like, one year we did, an elect, like, a department had an elected official, specific one. Um, we had Wendy Greve come, we paid her, that kinda thing, but so few came that we didn't, we, we didn't do that one again, so we've just been doing this one, but I mean, we are liable for all decisions in all offices, like, as far as personnel, so it's good for everybody to be trained, and also for the elected officials too, with things they.
Moving on to new business, uh, you got the policy, travel policy for employees.
The wager review board, that's the good one.
Yeah, we had the Marshall County one, which is really nice, and he'd given me that one, and then we had a wager review board meeting.
Thursday.
Thursday, I think, Thursday or Friday, it just seems like it yesterday, um, and he had rewritten one, but we hadn't had a chance to look at that one, and comparing, we didn't like the way that it was kinda spelled out with Marshall County, I think the questions that they were gonna have, or kinda, I know it seemed like a lot more language, um, in Marshall County, but the questions that they would have, but it would've been nice to combine the two, cause there was like things in each one that, um, it was like a copy of, you pretty much had Marshall Counties, but it was like, the, the way things were just kinda spelled out. Knowing all the years that we've worked with employees and how they question clarification, is where I'm getting at, that it seemed like it had more clarification in that. This is just the, a copy of the Marshall County, what you have in your book, is a copy of Marshall Counties. Um, and then one thing that the wager review board, where it just had eight to ten hours for, um, interstate travel, they felt that should be six to eight hours for one meal, and then anything over eight hours, they should get two meals. So if they're traveling more than that, and then same with, with down below, with the outstate, um, changing it from eight to ten, six to eight, and then anything over eight hours, it was gonna change that. Well, that's what, instead of going to twenty-five forty that we do now, it does, no, no, this is.
There ain't my concern with that, if you don't set eleven.
Well, that is, that is, that's the, uh.
Yeah, if you turn in fifty.
No, it's General Services Administration, the GSA, is what a lot of the counties go by. And that's, they can go right to that site, and it sets the standard.
What is the difference?
Uh, it changes, but, cause it actually depends on where you're traveling, but it's like fifty-five is the max, I think.
Where today.
Where today, I think, does that sound right fifty-five?
It'll be on the responsibility of the employee and the department head. That should an employee have travel plans, they have to go in to see what those rates are, they have to stay within those rates. Okay, so it puts more responsibility on them, but if somebody's going to um. Well, if somebody's going to Charleston as opposed to somebody going to Florida, the rate, the meal rate is gonna be the same. The fuel rate is not gonna be the same, the lodging rate is not gonna be the same. So um, when you send somebody for travel right now, they're getting twenty-five dollars for traveling to Florida and then forty. If if there's no meals provided, they get forty dollars, if there's a meal provided, they get twenty-five, if there's three minutes, so.
Yeah, that's kind of.
Yes.
So, okay, so for Charleston. The total available would be sixteen for lunch, nineteen, I mean, sorry, sixteen for breakfast, nineteen for lunch and twenty-eight for dinner. So a total of uh, sixty-three dollars without incidents.
And they still have to present their receipts, so that's the thing too, even for the meals, they have to present the receipts with it. Because we don't pay tips and we don't pay for alcohol, okay?
Yeah, I've seen that.
So that was one question I had and one thing I changed in it. Presently, the non-elected officials can get their check before they leave.
Well, that part's still in the policy itself.
Okay.
Yeah, that that part's still in the handbook, um.
So we would still allow employee, because like when they do that, they don't have to present receipts for it.
Well, no, that's, this is gonna change things.
Okay.
Yeah, on page sixteen, it still has that employees can get it ahead of time and elected officials cannot, um. But. They still need to present receipts, and especially if we start to allow them to use the P card.
Which is, I would love to see, that would be.
Yes, and there's no reason they can't. But itemized receipts are a must, are a must. And you know, it says in there, having a P card is a privilege, not a right, and it is a responsibility. So when you're using a P card, make sure you keep your receipt, it has to be itemized.
So, like Preston County, they, when they hire a dispatcher, they issue a P card for that dispatcher, but they keep it in a safe. And then if that person travels, they give it to them.
The department heads can get any P cards they want.
Okay.
We leave it up to the department head, we will get every employee a P card to put on it. That's up to the department head, if you wanna keep it locked up and just give it to them when they travel, that's fine with us.
That's what we'll do, because if, I I think that'd be easier than giving them a check and then expecting a receipt, because we'll forget, if they have the P card, somebody will track them down and make sure she gets.
But yes, yeah, so I think we can grow one.
Yeah.
Now, in the beginning, when we first got the P card, we were very like, okay, we're not gonna use the P. There's no reason they can't, you know, but, uh, on that, you know, P cards are only to be used for the employee. And no unauthorized person that is not an employee, so, they're not an employee, they cannot uh. And the the items that they purchase on there, um, they have to stay within the guidance of what's purchased. Uh, if it's for the meals, like I said, it cannot be alcohol and tips are not included on that either, so.
Do we need to approve this today?
Well, the idea is we went back to January first.
So I, well, I was wanting to know if anybody wants to take a minute to look over and, I mean, what other questions?
Wait, and and you're looking at this, and there were some things, you know, that. And the more I read over and over again, there was, I would have liked some more clarification, just so they always sees it in black and white.
That's why I asked, do we have to do this today? Or could we wait to the next meeting and look over? I'm asking.
Um, I know the sheriff's gone today with his staff. Um, they're traveling, um.
I don't have anybody going anywhere.
Um, I don't have anybody go anywhere.
Now, I'm in our county days, though, it's February.
We get it by the next meeting, maybe.
Would that be all right? Dutch, are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that, I'd like to review the policy, I think I'm okay with it, but I would like to just kind of review it, and I looked at it here a little bit, but.
For Lauren's sake, it's, she has to backdate everything from January first, so that's all we we can go past.
I mean, any of the travel that we're paying today, I can look before, we can make an adjustment.
Okay.
But I don't wanna get to February, and then we're trying to make, because we're gonna have a lot of traveling in February. Yeah, which you, you you kind of wish we just not, it's down to, because it was always the end of January, it's February or March now.
Okay, Mr. Fisher, yes.
Yeah, so we don't have as much travel in January, so I think we'll be okay. But I do wanna, I think I wanna add some things in here too, the more I read over, like I said, I would like to see more clarification so the employee. Won't have any question about what's expected and what's required of them as well.
Currently mileage is seventy cents a mile.
Which actually, that's the next item is. This goes by the IRS mileage, that's the other thing, um, which I don't know. State, the state mileage as opposed to IRS mileage. I mean, I'm sure there's probably a difference.
I was gonna say, I would assume they use the same one.
I don't know.
I would, well, first, on the um, the the meals, I I make a motion, we hold off to the next meeting.
Okay.
To vote on that.
On the travel policy.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. Uh, next meeting, okay, so the other thing, the wager review board addressed, and this, if I could have this discussed today. Um, so the employees accrue every month, they accrue sick vacation time. So, uh, a new employee will earn a day a month of vacation and a day and a half of sick. They have to use it in two-hour increments, okay? Um, because of, you know, the days in accrual and so forth. It's been an issue, and I guess again, because we've had a lot of new employees. Um, and the employees would like to use it in hour increments instead of two-hour increments, and then we get into how it computes and everything with the formulas. So what we would like to do is change the sick vacation time to hours. So instead of saying they get a day a month, we're gonna say they get eight hours a month. Okay, so it's just changing the word days to hours, and then the formula would just be an hour. So if an employee wants to take an hour to go around and do something, they only have to take an hour, they don't have to take two hours, okay? So it would benefit the office staff as well, because then you only have to cover, you know, if they're only gone for an hour as opposed to two hours, or maybe three hours instead of four hours.
That makes sense.
It will also help with the shifts, because when there's shifts, well, they're twelve, but like the law enforcement, they work eleven hours. Well, when you use vacation sick time, you have to do it in two-hour increments, so it's throwing everything off when they use leave as well. So, um, what we would like to do, and in the handbook, there are several areas where it refers to. Accrual and it says the word days, and the days would literally just be changed to hours. Now with that, if you are in agreement with it, then I will redo the timesheets, which technically I've already had, and try and get ahead of this. That it will be an hourly format. Um, it looks a little scary, uh, one person, law enforcement can carry over excess days, and one person had like two thousand sick hours. They already have it, it just looks bigger when it's in hours, so that's, I thought that's what.
Well, and even the commission staff, Jenna and Cody both work four nines and a four. Um, so when they take a sick day, it's always confusing for us, because they've gotta do their ten hours or eight hours and.
And then it shows it throws the formula off right now, because the formula is into our increments, so if they mark down nine hours used. Then their four months, it might say, or you know, several days off, instead of saying one hour, it might say one point one nine days. And it's like, it just throws right.
Well, now, my question is, do we have to approve this today, or do they wait?
That I would like done today, because I can get all the timesheets out for January, and we can start January one. If you have any concerns with changing the accrual to hours, it there, it's the same amount. It's just.
Same thing, it's just hours.
Yeah, you're not giving them any extra.
Right.
At this point, that's the next section.
So, so, as far as sick time, instead of them getting a day and a half a month, they're gonna get twelve hours a month.
Right.
And then they can use it in one hour increments.
Right.
I think that should be.
Okay. I'm I'm in favor of that, I I'll make a motion, we approve that.
And that's effective January one.
That's correct.
Yeah, I second that, and it's something that the wage and review board uh, recommended as well, there's not, not just Lauren, but.
No, no, this is, um, yeah, this is something that, this is something the employees, department heads have come up and asked several times. Um, okay, on that, now there's one other section. This is just a request that was brought up under wage and review. So at the end of January, or at the end of the year, excuse me, December thirty-first, you can carry over twenty-one vacation days. And sixty sick days, which I know we just changed that to hours, but I'm gonna talk in days just for the purpose of this, okay? So, um. Twenty-one vacation days, we're, you know, talking about, you know, leaving that, okay? Um, and then if they're over, let's say they have twenty-four vacation days. They lose those three days, they roll over to sick time, okay? But then anything over sixty in sick time, they lose, okay? So vacation days over twenty-one, roll over to sick. And then sick, anything over sixty, they lose. Now, what was requested at the wage review is that if we can increase that sixty carryover to eighty. Now, you're not actually giving the employee any additional time. That they haven't already accrued, okay? So these are employees that do not abuse or use their sick time. They, every year they get to sixty and they lose, they're not using the time, they are accruing it. So they're earning it, but then they're just losing it. Now, what's come about is we've had a couple people maybe with some illnesses, um, and of course, sixty days is actually three months. Um, okay, yeah, yeah, approximately, because of twenty, roughly twenty working days in a month. So it would give them an extra month, so if somebody is on recovery, um, maybe knee surgery, hip surgery, back surgery, uh. Cancer, whatever the issue may be, this employee has already been a dedicated employee to have gotten to that point. To have had that many days accrued, because it takes several years to accrue that. Um, at least you can only gain eighteen sick days a year, but these are employees that do not use or abuse their sick time. They're dedicated employees, they're just asking if it's a possibility to increase that carryover to eighty. Like I said, you're not giving them something they haven't already earned, they're just not losing it until they get over the eighty.
Well, and beyond that, people who were in first tier one, it didn't hurt anything, because what they lost went to their retirement. Now all of us in first tier two, earn those, don't use those days, and like this year alone, I lost fifteen days. Because I didn't call off sick, I didn't take, like, if I could have a doctor's appointment, I just make up the time. And I lost fifteen days this year, because I don't ever use sick time, and those go nowhere, they literally just go out to the abyss. Um, to never be seen again, I think eighty would be fair, it's like Lauren said. I have employees that have ten sick days, and I have employees that have sixty plus, because they don't use it.
And it takes a while to accrue them, it does, it takes a while to accrue it. And these are people that if they get to that point, it's because they don't use it or abuse it, they're dedicated employees and.
You're talking about four years of no sick time use to get to sixty days.
Right, so I'm, so I'm looking at, is there, is there a legality on this, or is. Is there um, anything that holds us up legally, is how many days we can give them?
No, I think that's just on the county, because actually, law enforcement gets to carry um, unlimited sick. Um, that's by code. So law enforcement, civil service is completely different, these would just be for the non-civil service employees, but no, different counties do. I mean, I can double check, make sure, just but.
I'm sure the sixty came from, because that's in the last twelve weeks, so I'm sure that's where the sixty came from, but I, and I'm sure it's not a. Law, like, I'm sure it could go eighty or however high.
Some people probably even have unlimited, but I, I mean. But again, this is, these are employees that are dedicated, they don't use and abuse their days in order to get.
Exactly, and then if they have a, an illness, then they can't, then they're missing pay because they're off work, but. Uh, honestly, I'm, I'm actually in favor of increasing that up to even, if they had up to six months, like a hundred and twenty days, so. But that's, that's uh.
For eighty now, I I'm moving with it.
Just, just numbers alone, I'm, I'm gonna go up.
I'm thinking of the, of the, the mu- the money part, it's all.
These employees earn this time.
Anytime this costs us money, is when they retire.
No, no, if they, if they're terminated, resign or retire, those days are gone.
We lose sick days.
The vacation days.
Yeah, vacation days, which max out at twenty-one in the first year, and then anything they accrue throughout the year. So, but no, sick days, that's what I'm saying, these employees have earned this. Um, and the only time you're, the only time it's gonna cost you is if they have an illness, which would require them. And if you have an an employee that has an illness and says, I have to come to work even though, you know, let's say somebody had, and this happened a couple years, but it's been several years ago. At an employee with cancer, and she hadn't come back to work even though she was severely ill, because she couldn't afford not to have an income. And, um, because her days were enough.
What do you wanna take it up to, Dutch?
Hundred twenty.
Hundred twenty? I agree, I agree.
Um, basically, basically doubling it, we'd be doubling it.
So.
How much they can accrue.
Nine years to accumulate that, right?
Okay, because you can only give you like fifteen days a year. Eighteen, sorry, eighteen days.
Yeah. Then they're really dedicated, they work that long.
On that motion, real quick question, and I'm sure the answer's no, but I'm gonna ask anyways. So I have fifty-five carryover sick days from my time here that I've lost.
Starting January, one of this year, that's one thing we were gonna point to, January one.
So all my fifty-five are still lost, that was just, just one to ask. Cause I'm giving away fifty-five.
Please, that lost all eighteen. There are employees that didn't use a single sick day this whole year and lost those eighteen days. So, um, but we're gonna start from January one. And then same with the the hour lease that we just made, effective January one, will carry over from this point then.
So, I make.
Yeah, one twenty, yeah.
So, my carryover from last year, I do lose or I don't lose?
He would have lost, yeah.
So I still lose what I earned last year.
That's up to the commission then. I have.
Oh, okay.
You're starting January one.
Unless you want the December thirty-first carryover to continue.
I don't. While we earned last year, that's only one here, then you wouldn't have to go back and look at any records or anything.
And one year.
And again, these are days that they've already accrued.
What do you think, Dutch?
Uh, eh, um. I don't know, I'm on the fence, it don't matter. Uh, you're talking about going back just. What ended December thirty-first, taking it back to December thirty-first and carrying that over, right?
Twenty-three, right.
Twenty-twenty-four, last month, two months, yeah, last month. No, no, it's their carry, it's their December thirty-first.
From December, yes.
So their December thirty-first timesheet.
We're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know what you mean. Yeah, because there's a lot of, like, I have fifteen days I lose this year. Yeah, all my people have days that they're gonna lose, so, so if we could, but and that's, and it's not asking a lot, because you have those.
I have to do the timesheets again anyway, so I gotta formulate them into hours as opposed to. All they already accrued, changing um, accrual and use by hours. So when you guys use a day, they can use eleven hours, not eleven point two five, it's just.
Okay, so I, Mark scratched that last motion there, uh, that we just. Go ahead and do a hundred and twenty days accrued and then carry over to December.
December twenty twenty-four, have you heard that, Dutch?
Yes, yes, I'll second that.
And I'll approve that also.
Okay, I didn't even know that was coming up, but thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
While they're on that, just, and I don't mean to walk in the middle of your conversation, but if the wage and hour thing, did anybody bring up? And I didn't tell Roger to bring it up, but about being able to donate. Wanna ask that, because the school system.
Well, now, there's, we did discuss that, we did discuss it, and there's more to it, okay, because. You have different employees at different pay rates and at different departments. So the issue is whether, you know, if we keep it by department, or him and I have discussed this several times, we kind of came up with some formulas. It would involve, um, you know, the employee signing off on it, the department head signing off on it, the county commission signing off on it. Every time somebody wants to give, and they have to give vacation time, not sick time, okay?
See through the school, what we done, what what you could do there, because I've donated.
School's very different, I talked to him about that, I did talk.
Donated today, and it wasn't, money had nothing to do with it, it was what the.
Their salaries are different and their pay process is different.
The employee that you're donating it to, their salary is what you donated to, if it was less than yours. Then it was less, if it was more than yours, you still donated them a day, I'll just use a day. I think that's a good policy for.
Yeah.
Somebody.
Cause I know we've run into that a couple times, and not to hijack everything, but I, we've run into that a couple times where. You know, we had. you know, we had a guy that his baby was in NICU for three months. And he used his sick time up and then he worked every day because he was accruing ten thousand dollars a day for Morgantown or whatever it is, you know, because he's got a baby in NICU. And he'd work, drive to Morgantown, sit out there, come back, drive to work, drive to work, like, he did that for months. And we couldn't do anything to help him other than just give him money and then he still was having to come to work and I've and again, like, right now, I've got the new guy, his wife was pregnant, he's getting ready to go off and he's just not been here long enough to have any time to say, no, he's got like four days, you know, so. And I asked about it, and that's, there's no policy on it, so, and I, and I don't know if it's something you can do today or not, or how that works.
Because there's a lot more to it, because also we don't wanna just put it into a pot. Because we have employees that abuse a lot, they take off every Monday, every Friday, they, I mean, they're so, you know, they use and use every day before they even get it. So if you put it in a pot, they would just start pouring from them. So it would have to be, we'd have to set it up so it'd be for a specific employee. Um, and then again by the department, cause if you have an employee that's making, uh, fourteen dollars an hour and somebody, they're covering somebody that's making thirty dollars an hour, that's not you know, that's gonna take three of their days to equal one of their days. So there's, there is a lot to it, not only that, is it coming out of my budget to cover, you know, the tax office budget or vice versa. So that's where the employee has, there's gonna have to be documentation, the employee's gonna have to sign, the department head's gonna have to sign, the county commission's gonna have to sign, because it's actually changing from department to department. So yes, we've discussed it, we've come up with different formulas, um, but there's more to it.
When I worked out there, no, it was PTO, so like, you didn't get sick days, you just got PTO, so you was either sick or vacation or however you wanted to do it, but they knew what my pay rate was, and say, Lauren, you're taking off next week and you'd normally get paid five hundred dollars, well, I could donate if I wanted to donate you three days, which was three hundred and fifty dollars, that's what you got, and so, you know what I mean, the days didn't really matter, it was.
Department or same PayPal, but it's, it's not really, because my employees are at one, Chris's employees one, Jill's at another. So it's the crisscross over, so, um, but then the question was like law enforcement, if they, if, you know, the guys did wanna give a day, the older guys wanna give to that new employee, obviously, one of their days is like three ahead, or you know.
Well, just like me, I, and again, we're, I'm not complaining, but I've got close to four hundred sick days, because I never, I mean, I took off peaks when my dad had cancer, but other than that, I've never took off. And I've got like four hundred sick days. And I've got thirty vacation days that every year I get another five or ten sick days that roll out of my vacation into my sick days, because I just, I don't take them, and so, and I'm maxed, I've been maxed out on vacation for the last fifteen years. Every year I roll days over, cause I just, I get more than I take, I just don't take them, and, uh.
But in all honesty, it would probably, if law enforcement was, I'm just using for an example. Uh, does he, did he need anything? Does he need?
I think he's getting a phone call.
Oh, uh, in all honesty, if, if the deputies was involved in this, uh, then what that would do is you just give them the hours, the rate of pay would be the the rate of pay to that individual's getting there. Chances are.
But because of how.
I know what you're saying, but that's the way.
When you're moving it from one department to another, that's a budget revision.
That's what.
So we're not letting a single business.
School board did, I mean, you just give them a day.
Again, I'm not trying to.
But this has to go to the wage and review board, and like I said, we have discussed this and we have been working on it, and it's just not gonna happen right now.
I think that'd be a good thing.
And even if you did it by department, department, you know, like, I know my guys, my guys will benefit more because we get more time than everybody else does, and, you know, but I, if I, I'll, if, to me, that's a better policy than no policy, if I could just donate my ten guys, even if everybody, buddy donates a couple of days, I mean, that would add up pretty quick.
Well, there was a limit of how much you could donate to the school.
Yeah.
When I think at least half of law enforcement went over their thirty vacation days, they all had excess days.
Yeah, well, that's, we haven't, we can't take all.
And that's something, maybe we'll have two different procedures, one if it's within department and one if it's if you're crossing over departments. Like I said, if you're crossing over departments, that's an actual budget revision to the state.
Well, cause the department crossing, that would almost be necessary, because like, if you look at
Prosecutor's Office, they only have two employees.
Right, well, the prosecutor's office, exactly, like, a lot of these departments are small, that.
If, if I had a gravy jar. You know, I.
But they did approve the hours. By hours, so when they use a day of eleven, then, I know it's eleven point two five, but they're still just gonna have to put eleven, so.
Well, I think, you know, while we're in all this, one last thing. The sick usage policy, like technically the policy says we can only use five days to take care of an immediate family member.
Fifty-six hours.
Fifty-six hours, so what's that, seven days? And then three days for grie- bereavement for an immediate family member. Both of those numbers should be increased at some point too, cause like, I remember a couple of years ago when someone lost a child, like, you're like, I'm only gonna be allowed to use three days.
No, they can use their vacation time.
Well, right, but you have all this sick time that you've earned, and you don't ever take off, and then you have to burn your vacation to grieve for a lost child or a parent or, like, I, I really feel like sick. Yeah, sick time should be ineligible.
Well, that's some discretion with the department head, if you know.
Right.
I mean, if your employee, yeah, I mean, you can judge that.
Yeah, well, that's what.
I mean, you, every, I can't no two circumstances are the same.
Right.
And, um, so it's just kinda, some things are on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
I mean, we've had, we've had employees say, cause this spells out exactly who your immediate family is and who you can use that for. Um, okay, so that maybe they weren't close, and this is kind of putting anybody, but okay, maybe they weren't close to their parents, they were raised by their aunts and uncles. They can't use time for their aunt and uncle, but they were their providers, they raised them. But it says parent, you know, so, or maybe even a, um, a significant other that, you know, to their spouse, that was never officially their father, but raised them like their father. And they can't use time for them, but in everything but ink, that was their parent. So we've had a situation like that, so there's, it's a case by case.
Well, that's how we do it too, but the, the policy should probably say that, like, my department and elected officials.
Okay, this, this move on here, thanks, I think about that and I think, I thought about that when they were talking about.
I just know, and again, I mean, but that's come up a couple of times with us.
Maybe we need to look at it, you know, in their, each office. The wage and reviews might go through the handbook too, it could have been since two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, we, we have some amendments already to it, but we do need to, um, officially add those in, like I said, I need to make, and we're gonna need more regularly on the wage review, so we can get some of this stuff before the budget.
Okay, we're up here to our ten-thirty appointment, sir? You have a ten-thirty appointment, right?
Somebody told me eleven-thirty.
Ten-thirty.
Ten-thirty, yeah. Well, I thought it was early, but I don't really know. Are you okay with me?
Yeah, you can sit there.
I didn't want you coming in before your shift.
So, I guess you all know that Joel sent me, the sheriff sent me here, cause he's in training. So there was a couple of things, it's just housekeeping issues. Uh, and I don't know if you all actually need these, or if we need, these is the estimates for.
All accrues.
Cruser install. So, as far as that goes, I don't know where we stand on all that. But, we've got all in the new cars that we can't do, or we haven't been able to do anything with. Because I guess there's something that has to be submitted to Charleston to get approval or something.
A waiver.
Yeah, which I, I, I was under the understanding, we've done that before, and I, I don't know what the legalities are, what the particulars are, what is going on, but just so you know, all four of those cars is waiting in with some kind of action to be taken, uh.
Okay, so on this, um, that, the letter that we're getting, that's one of the things that it mentions, is we have to have a contract exemption to use a county employee to do this work. Um, in order to get a contract exemption, we have to show a substantial savings or a hardship to the county by using that employee. So one of the things we needed was quotes to show how much it would cost to have the vehicles outfitted. We then, I will get with the sheriff, we then have to put together the documentation for a contract exemption. The last time we requested one was for the chase car, um, that took forever and was a huge pain in the butt. I'm hoping this is a little more clear-cut and simple, but that ended up being like a forty-page document, this should be simpler, um. The sheriff has always had the discretion to have the vehicles outfitted within his budget, that's not come to the commission. But the contract exemption is a commission unofficial binding, so that's how we ended up involved in this, um, but I will work with the sheriff and we'll get a contract exemption request submitted. However, it is a month's turnaround minimum, um, before an exemption, that's if Joel and I get it done quickly before the next.
You need some, these cruisers are bad.
They're all, I mean, they've all been sitting, and the other thing that's gonna be coming up, and I don't know, uh, and like I said, I didn't know, I don't know all the particulars, he just gave me those and told me to bring them over, but I've got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars within car cameras I can't install either, cause they're all sitting. And that contract starts in March, uh, for the LPRs and all that, they, I mean, they have to be installed in a car before you can use it, and we're gonna start paying for that. They did, we called them and asked them, because it should have already stuck, cause we got a year free on the LPRs, I don't know if you'll remember that, the license plate thing to where it uploads to the system, and, uh, we got a year free of that service, and we called and asked them like, hey, cause it should have been from the delivery date. And we asked them for an extension till March because of all this going on, and which they did grant us, but still start in March, that we've got a year from March that that, that's going to be running, so.
Didn't Roger say he would be willing to do those on overtime, if the commission was okay with that?
Did, if the commission's okay with that.
So.
The cameras? I can't really, I hate to give you a time frame, but it's substantial, I mean, it's.
I feel like he said about four hours. Is what he told me.
It's, and it depends, it's much easier for him if it's a new install, you know, because he's got the process down and he's got the seats out, and he's got all that stuff done, and then he puts everything in and then puts all the interior of the car back. For a car that's on the road, what we currently have has gotta come out, and then he's gotta put the new stuff in. So I, I hate to give you, I mean, I can find out, but I would say six, eight hours is in the ballpark, probably, just guessing.
Oh, so the reason why you can't do it is cause he's a paid county employee?
Yes, yes, how, okay, so a paid county employee differs based on if they're a contracted.
Okay.
If they're contracting through a private business, or if they're doing it, a county employee can do whatever. One county time, like, he could do all the vehicle outfits on overtime, but he's not interested in that. Um, be- cause it's not lucrative, right, that way.
Well, he's paying business insurance and everything, just cause it, and not that that's our problem, but realistically, he can't afford to do all that and get paid overtime rate, you know, like, it's just not.
So he said he would put in the in-car cameras, I can, he might have said four or six hours when he talked to me.
I, I don't know, but I'd say that's an important.
He can do that on overtime legally, there's no legal issue with that, that's just like hiring the mechanic, so do the county's work. You don't have to get an exemption, cause they work for the county, they're doing it on county time. This, we have to have an exemption because he's doing it as a private business, he's gaining from us, um. But they will have to submit these, honestly. Yeah, so.
And if we approved it, then he could start immediately.
No, the ethics commission has to approve it, that's the problem, that's why it's a long turnaround. So Roger's quote is thirty-two hundred, I mean, these are all public documents.
Per car.
Per car. Um, East Coast emergency lighting is three thousand six hundred out of New Jersey.
But the, they've got a local office, but I don't know what the people said, they're probably false.
Oh, is that the people who do Chris's car?
Yeah.
Okay, and then Timber, Chevrolet? Would do it for fifty-eight hundred. So it's, uh, that's what's also providing all the stuff. Right, yes, all the stuff.
For Timber, they want fifty-eight hundred dollars, we should deal with all the stuff.
We are providing all the stuff for all of you.
Yeah, I know.
Yes, so thirty-two hundred, thirty-six hundred and fifty-eight hundred, or the three.
I'll be honest with you, I was shocked if they was that cheap. There's a lot of work there, I don't think they understand what they're bid, I, I mean, there's a lot of work there. He's putting in, you've got a cage, the cam- two cages and, uh, so you've got two cages, the camera, the computers, the, um, the internet hotspots, all the light boxes, the, all the lights themselves, bar light, sirens, speakers. And it's, it's substantial, it's a lot, it, I don't think like for a vehicle, he figures around forty hours per vehicle is at least to do a vehicle completely outfitted, I think is what his figure is.
Well, and I'll work with Joel.
Is that price per vehicle, or is that?
No, that's.
Okay.
Um, I'll work with Joel to get this exemption submitted, I'm not sure a four hundred dollar difference is going to even be approved, though. That's, I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't submit, but.
I think we should.
It's, um, I don't know if the ethics commission's gonna see four hundred dollars as a financial hardship on the county, and you have to prove a true hardship.
Four, it's sixteen hundred bucks.
Well, to, the in-car's are going at all of them.
The in-car, that's a completely separate issue, I guess, based, so you're saying we gotta do this every time he does anything?
Absolutely, every single time. And this isn't like us, this is the auditor said, that's, you need to fix this or it'll be a real finding next time.
Uh, I don't know what we need to do here, but that's that's gonna be a, I, I mean, I, I don't know how you justify it to the auditor's office, but that's gonna be a huge hardship. I mean, if my stuff breaks at twelve-thirty at night, I can send a text message and it's fixed a half hour later, it literally, that's you don't even have to go out to service to get stuff fixed. And that's the kind of stuff that, when you look at these bids, it's like, well, okay, but in reality, the service we're getting, and again, I understand he's an employee, but the other thing is, is he's done our parts for twenty years and I've been here.
Well, I understand what you're saying, I mean, I get it, the ethics commission does make a lot of things complicated to get done, but we also the law is the law, we don't want it to start becoming an official finding on our audits, it's not a good look. But. Cause they said like, the maintenance side of things, if he can, wants to continue to do that, we would have to get quotes on maintenance contracts from other vendors, and we'd have.
See, that's what I'm almost thinking.
But this, why we submit every time we get a cruiser?
Well, why couldn't he do, include the new installs for four vehicles, we know how many cars we're getting every year. And at budget time, we could just approve a contract for the whole year.
Well, we would, but that contract would have to go to the ethics commission for exemption, every year.
Uh, if we did it at budget time, though, we would, that would be way ahead of when we actually needed it.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, I mean, this should have been done.
Months and months ago, yeah.
Yeah, um, but, I mean, I'll, I'll get with Joel, and I'm hoping it can be as simple as a one or two-page letter explaining the circumstances and attaching this, and
Yeah.
The ethics commission's got some
Well, they.
new attorneys, though, and it's, uh.
Yeah, I'm a quit out there, it's a struggle, they're not the same attorneys they used to be. What about a hardship on our end, will they see it as a hardship for us?
I don't know. I, I mean, they might see four hundred dollars as a hardship, but they might not, I have no idea how that would work. Yeah, but sixteen hundred of eight million, right, is not.
Yes, that's what else.
Yeah. But I don't know, I mean, Roger's always thought him, I'm not talking against him, we will absolutely submit and do as we can, and I'm just telling you the realities of the situation.
Gotta protect yourself, too.
Now, just add it up with, if it takes him eight hours to do one of those on this hourly, I mean, his rate, it would be three hundred and eighty dollars.
Or in-car? Yeah, oh, yeah, we haven't even, what do y'all wanna do about that?
Well, can we legally do it?
We.
If it doesn't.
For the in, so the, this is a whole separate issue from that, the in-car cameras do really need to be done sooner, and we can absolutely do that one. We can do. We can do that. Yeah, there's nothing illegal about it. So just pay a county employee to do a job as a county employee.
What they gotta be done, we need them done.
I mean, that, we need to do something. And I'll be honest with you, this is just my two cents. If I was Roger, I wouldn't even make that offer, but he made that offer because he knows they need done. You know what, like he know, he's the one that did the contract. He knows how that's worked. And what we're saving by having. All right, he said he would start working on those as soon as possible.
Do I hear a motion to let Raj do it for overtime?
Does the in-car?
The in-car.
In-car.
In-car, in-car camera.
I made the motion.
Roger, you realize you're making a motion, you wanna, you wanna motion to in, to give them more overtime? I just wanna make sure you clear, you understand what you're saying.
I've done thought of that, but.
Overtimes, overtime, everybody knows overtime's a hot topic right now, so. I'll, I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion. We need to get it, we do need to get the cameras in there. We need to get them done.
We've got all that money sitting in boxes in our storage building because we don't know who to get to. We're not allowed to get them installed.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. I just wanted to get a jab in it, Roger, that's all.
You, you can't sit, I know, but there's teardrops right here.
Who, um what about getting the other vehicles stripped so they can be sold?
Is there seven or nine when I counted that they need to be sold?
I, I know. But I know he got much of them. Uh. I think, don't quote me, I know he worked on that at different times, like I know he's taking some of that stuff out. Uh like, I'm pretty sure all the radios are out. There's still some things that need to be stripped, but I can get with him and get a price on that and try to get that done. Cause that needs to be done. I mean, we, that, that needs to be.
So how many vehicles do you think now?
I, there's seven behind the garage. And I count, there's two more sitting somewhere else, but I can't remember. Or at his house, there's two more at his house. So I don't know what's there, what's good, but there's at least nine that aren't being driven. There are.
All the cars are, they're ready to be sold. I mean, they, they need to be sold.
Yeah.
Um, it's just been a matter of trying to get an auction set up apparently is.
No, they're not stripped. I, I listen on dub deals. I told Buddy that, but they just haven't, that's all, like they just haven't been stripped. That's what he said. We could list them as soon as they're stripped. They all still say sheriff, they all still have blue lights. The radio's been pulled from somebody. All of them saw light bars on them.
I'll, I'll get with him and see what we know.
Do they pull the light bars also?
Maybe, just get one done at a time at least and then get it out there.
I think it's your talking probably fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars from sale of those, because. One of our deals still there for at least a grand a piece at home two or three.
That'll pay for what we're going with these new ones. See, there, I, I thought of this.
Driving tears. Driving your tears.
It's help, it's help. Okay.
So the other thing that he wanted me to bring up was he would like to advertise for. The open position in the tax office.
Yes, he talked us.
Uh that's a new, that's what he said, so.
When, when does he want that done? Because we talked about maybe.
The way he's talking, he'd like to get it before tax season, which is.
Oh, yes.
So he's, he's wanting it sooner around.
He needs a couple of months to train, correct?
The money's already in the budget.
Money's in the budget.
He had talked to Chris, but I know, and again, I apologize, but this is not the stuff I do with daily, but. I, he told me he had talked to Chris and Chris Spurling.
Yeah.
And she said that if, the sooner the better. So like, basically, he's wanting authorization to advertise for the position. So he can start doing interviews and get somebody in so that they can have them trained up when taxes start. So that's, that's.
How he gets to everything, it'll probably be. End of February, first of March, where he hires them anyway.
It, it will. I mean, I would assume, I would say so.
I'll make a motion to allow him to post that job.
I second that also. Okay, what else you have there, AJ?
Give me just a second to make my notes, because I'll forget what I'm.
Yeah, that's, that's down on the new business, but we're.
Are taking care of it, it's not a problem.
What, you cold? You cold?
Yeah, I'm freezing.
You should sit over here.
I'm late, that's how I put my table back there in that corner.
Well, sit here, there's a chair here right now. I want you to be cold.
So, the other thing that I got drafted into is the overtime request. Uh, he had told me, the conversation me and him had had was that you all were looking for a number is what we were going to require to get through the.
Well, we have to have.
Yeah, so.
Yes, sir.
Uh. On my way over here, I was thinking I should have printed out a worksheet for you so that you could see the numbers that I'm looking at instead of, but. I did the figuring. For what Tim had given me. We currently had spent a hundred and fifty thousand to one fifty-two forty-five is what she had given me to. That we had spent as of the end of the year.
Okay, and you're talking about end of twenty.
Yes, that's what.
From June, from June one, or I'm sorry, July one. You've got a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Two forty-five. Um, now, I wasn't. Apparently Tom and Karen's salary comes out of that too.
I don't know.
Somehow, some of that.
There's separate line, there's forty-two thousand set under hourly, but it hits that line item.
Yeah.
So then every couple of months, then I'll do a journal entry and move it over.
Cause the, the reason, like, I didn't mean, you would talk about an additional line item, and again, I apologize, this is not, this is about my pay grade, but. So, just for deputies overtime. Removing that hourly time that comes out of the same line item apparently. Was one thirty-three, four ninety-three, so.
For six months?
For six months, that's what it was. So, what I did is I figured out, and again. We've got guys that's got six months in and we've got guys that's got twenty-five years in. So like, our pay rates run. I'm the highest paid at thirty-four, forty-nine an hour and our lowest guy is twenty-three, twelve an hour. So you've got about a twenty dollar spread there, you know, um but the average overtime rate. For all of our guys, the average is forty-two dollars is what it averages out, because those are straight time rates. Overtime rates run from fifty-two to thirty-five, so.
Well, let me ask you a question. I, I've already been curious about this. Now, we give, we give a hundred thousand dollars. Start, start uh twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five all this overtime, but I know. And that's not a lot, but I could remember us a few years ago, but a hundred thousand dollars less than the whole year. Why is it almost three hundred thousand?
Because the biggest thing is the, the fact that we've been down. I mean, so, and that's what I figured out, forty-two, forty-two dollars an hour is the average. Mine is substantially more than that, about ten, twelve dollars. Then we got guys that are substantially less than that, but forty-two is the average. At that rate, at an average rate of forty-two dollars an hour, every holiday costs us four thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. So if you've got sixteen, seventeen holidays a year, uh. Just between December, January first and July first, I'm gonna spend. Twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and ten dollars just covering holidays. And that's, that's if I don't work.
Well, that's twenty-nine thousand dollars in holidays, but now you've got a hundred and four thousand dollars working overtime.
So then I've also got. I've got seven, six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. For Camp Menko that's gonna come out of the same line item, but then that gets reimbursed, but it's gotta be there, of course, to spend it. Uh, I've got seventeen thousand that's coming out of this line item for Tom and Karen, which again, I think that's low, but. Because I think it, shouldn't that be twenty-two thousand?
I bet you it's forty-two.
That's, so.
They're each seventeen.
Well, that. So, I don't know, that's, that's in the neighborhood, but what it, what it comes out to with what we've spent. Uh, we've been averaging eight point two five hours of overtime per guy per week. So.
How, how much overtime?
Eight point two five. Per guy, per week, uh per pay period.
Why is it that much?
Because for months, I've been down two or three guys.
Are you down, how much you down now, one?
Two.
I thought we done an emergency hire.
We did, and then somebody else has done a lot. So, that's, we did an emergency hire. I've got a guy in the academy now. So we're paying him, but he's useless. And then Anderson left. And then, so then I had to move a guy from there, because court security has to get covered as quick. So. Foscus is moving to court security to cover it and. Yonker is coming back on the road on the fifteenth. But with the water in the academy and an opening, I'm still down two guys on the scope. So.
And there's no way that, and here's my, and I, I don't want you to take this the wrong way.
No.
But I'm telling you right now, three hundred thousand dollars a year overtime is unheard of.
I, I know.
It's unheard of. You, but I've talked to a lot of the other counties and it's nowhere near that.
What, I think what gets lost in the translation though is. For that hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, if I'm down two guys just in round numbers, that's a hundred thousand dollars in salary. That we'd be paying straight time to somebody, you know what I mean? I know the numbers are scary when you look at the numbers, but when you look at our vampire, I've still gotta cover those shifts. And that's why our man, that's why our overtime has been so out of line.
I know when, when Jeremy, again, and I'm not talking against Jeremy, please don't take it that away, but. I remember him coming to us. I remember this. And he said, if we could get these two deputies, new, two new deputies hired, it takes up to sixteen, he said, that'll cut the overtime.
It would.
It did.
I've never had them on the road.
Well, they did there for a while.
For about six months.
But it didn't stop the overtime, to my day.
But for about six months, but again, and again, I'm not, I don't want to pick on you. I don't want to be, come off like a marketing, because I genuinely.
I understand.
Cause we've had these conversations and I understand. I understand the concern and I get it. However. Uh. You're talking like two thousand nineteen, when we hired those guys. They literally were, were in COVID.
Yes.
So our overtime was through the roof because of COVID anyway. Uh, and then they went to the academy and they come back and worked for six months and I ended up firing two up.
Yeah, I know.
And so, I get what you're saying. If I had a full schedule, the way my schedule should be. Is I should have a supervisor and a K-nine guy that's working a split shift. So that if somebody does take a vacation day on day shift, I've got somebody to slide down and cover that. Or if somebody takes a vacation on night shift, I've got somebody to slide back and cover that. That is the intent and that's how if I had a full schedule. Then, if that's how that would work, but. Not only do I not have a full schedule, I'm damn, I mean, I'm down. Uh.
How much salary, if you had those two people, how much did we get?
It's around a hundred thousand. That's some salaries, a hundred thousand and then whatever your benefits. Pump and all that, I don't know what it all will be.
So, look at that way. I'm sorry, I'm just thinking out loud here. Look at that way, we've always kept fifty thousand dollars in overtime, but it's not gonna stop.
My suggestion, and I, I've talked to Joel and I've talked to Luke, and I, I mean. I personally would like for us to try to do that work session deal and sit down and specifically discuss. The overtime and try to come up with a long-term solution to fix the overtime. Uh. I really don't know what that solution is, but I genuinely understand the concern and I genuinely would like to try to fix it. However, when you start breaking it down. And to me, and my guys, if they're averaging eight point two five, that's regular overtime. Well, for every holiday. They're getting paid eleven or twelve hours for double time and a half. So every month that there's a holiday, the guys that work that have used their average, you know what I'm saying? Like it sounds bad, but if they work one holiday. That's their eight point two five overtime for the, that week plus next week's, you know, like, so. I know it's bad and I know it sounds bad, but the holidays are killing us. I mean, the holidays is costing us fifty, sixty, seventy thousand, depending on like this past year. It was, it was almost seventy thousand we paid just in holidays. So it, it, though, they add up. Uh, and then again.
I don't remember.
And, and like I said, right now, currently I've got one supervisor that's covering day shift. So he's just a day shift guy. And then I am covering a supervisor shift in the afternoon and at night. So like, we're, I, I'm filling the schedule at this point, so if there's a holiday, you're paying me. Whatever it is to come and work, because I'm one of only two or three guys that's out. And I, I mean, we've got to be there. And the problem is, and I know that question has come up like, well, why do you, you know. It's an hour and a half trip to Augusta and, you know, on, on, just because it's a holiday. I can't leave these guys out by themselves. You can't work two guys, or we try to, we work in two guys. We work two guys in the mornings because the state police is out. But after midnight, the state police is home. And so then my, we're out by ourselves and if somebody gets arrested, then you've got nobody. And then that supervisor, either the supervisor or the K-nine guy stays out to cover that. That's, the K-nine guy's out till three. Supervisor's usually out till midnight or one or whatever, like my schedule, I blow back and forth, whatever I need to do. Uh. I know it's a lot.
Now, every, every employee gets approximately eight point five hours every time a week?
Eight point two five is what it works out to, and that's just the average.
Why, why does it work out to eight? What, where'd you get there something?
I, so what I did is. Up to this point, we've spent a hundred thirty-three thousand and change. Divided that by six months, so that comes out to twenty-two and change per month. I divided that by sixteen guys. Uh. That comes out to thirteen ninety-one per guy per month. You divide that forty-two an hour and you just, I just worked it down.
Is that?
And it comes out to per pay, it's sixteen point five hours is what that averages per pay per guy. And again, that's a time and a half rate. So if you have one holiday, that's more than that, is what I'm saying. But.
Well.
So my, my suggestion, uh. I mean, I, and I don't know how you guys want to handle it, whether we want to come back and deal with it again later or what you want to do. My suggestion is if, if we can put. I know for sure by the time my scheduled overtime and Tom and Karen, uh. That comes out to fifty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty. So. That, if, if you give us another hundred and fifty. Minus the, what that's holidays, Camp Menko, because Camp Menko's four weeks. Or four, five weeks, four nights a week. Uh, so. If you give us another hundred and fifty, which is basically what we've spent, that should get us through to July without any more problems and then. Whatever we don't spend, you get back anyway. If you wanted to do less than that, then we can come back and revisit it again. I don't know how y'all want to do it, but.
Well, I, I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you. I'm gonna tell you something, this may not go over good. But, uh, we don't know what our choice is going to go up to. It's gonna go up to probably a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars a year if something's not done. You know, that's, and if we keep having to dish out three hundred thousand dollars overtime, we're gonna be broke. You're gonna have to start figuring out who wants to get laid off. Cause I'm telling you, it, we can't keep this on. And I, I know it's bad, I know that.
I know, it's, it's, so, and again, I, the only thing I can tell you is. I have open suggestions. You, you know, and I, and honestly, I think that's why we need to have a work session and sit down and.
That's what I think. I think let's do a work session, we'll sit down and talk to it and have, so that we have Joel there and all of us there and we can.
Yeah, cause that's.
Kind of anxious out a little bit.
Uh. If, if we can get these guys hired and get them on the road and quit losing people, I mean, and it's, and again, I know. If if we can get these guys hired and get them on the road and quit losing people, I mean, and it's, and again, I know, I know what you're talking to, you know, the. But I have not had a full schedule, I mean, if you want, I can go back and. But we have not had a full schedule for years, and you've got to understand that what we're paying a guy fifty thousand dollars. Is costing me seventy-five thousand every time that he leaves, and I've gotta cover it, somebody that's on overtime. And, you know, and there's been all these things maddened around, and well, why don't you do this, or why don't you do that, you know, it's like call time, or it's like. I I can't cover my, my guys can't take vacation, and so call time is gonna do absolutely nothing. Because they've gotta use it in the same pe- pay periods, so if I work overtime tonight, and then I take it as call time next week. Now I gotta pay somebody overtime next week to cover my call time, cause I'm taking off, like, it it, it's just a vicious circle, and right now, with my vampire being what it is, and I get it. I'm not, I'm not saying that you're wrong, and then, I get it, but I think we need to sit down and talk about it, and try to come up with something, but.
Well, let's get one set up.
There's two things, I was glad we approved the holiday schedule before he. We might have not got all the holidays.
Yeah, you wouldn't have got the holiday.
But I will know too, we.
And I mean, I, I get it, I, I mean, but I don't think people realize what it actually costs, I mean.
But we do have a hundred fifty thousand dollars in the budget since we're not using it for the rental.
Yeah, not hardly.
You say, it's budgeted, it's budgeted.
Well, it's budgeted, but I wanna give it to law enforcement. We'll, we'll pay what about the parks?
Well, my thing is, the thing of it is, you might have a hundred and fifty this year. But if if our insurance goes up a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, it's around that, isn't it?
Yeah, but the way that we are, uh, we estimated the amount we needed for the H R A.
Yeah.
But we have not met, we were probably not even sixty percent of that usage, so we are saving.
A little bit.
Yes.
But my concern is, and I, and and I know you don't, you probably don't even know this, but. Ten years ago. And this is, this concerns me, cause I'm leaving in two years, and this concerns me, and I don't want it next year, I'll be honest with you, but ten years ago. We had a regional jail bill that was nine hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, we was in debt to them. We had to, it was tough, wasn't it?
Yeah, we had to pull like in bills.
We had to pull things and put things off, and if if the money continues to keep spending, the rate it's going now. We've got a problem, in two years, we're gonna have a problem, cause I don't know if you guys know this, but last month, our regional jail bill went up from. Thirty-some thousand, now it's up to forty-some thousand a month.
But the dates of yesterday aren't like.
Exactly.
A risk of ticking people off, and I said, we need to have a work session about it, I do understand where you're coming from, but at the same time. Nine one one and law enforcement and emergency services has got to be funded first, and it's not like. I'm sending my guys out here working DUI patrols, we haven't done a DUI, I haven't done a DUI patrol in years, because I don't have the guys to work them. And I, we, we just don't have, we do not have the vampire, and again, that's not your fault, you, we've increased pay, we've done sign-on bonuses. Like, we were trying to get guys, but I lose them as fast as I get them, and it's, I, I, and I do get it, but. Genuinely, I sometimes think that y'all don't really understand, well, what we do try to do.
I, I know, I know what you're saying.
And I, and genuinely, I don't mean any disrespect to any of yous by that, I mean, I get it, I've told you this before, I get it, if you want me in here, you want a question where three hundred thousand dollars. Was born, that's why it's written on every overtime sheet, you can, we can look at them, and it'll tell you exactly what the guy was doing. If he was on a fatality, or murder, or B and E, or what they was on, that, it's on there.
But my thing, and I get it, I'm, I'm not complaining, I'm just saying, that if it keeps up, we'll be in trouble.
And I, and I do, I get it.
And I don't think, I don't think everybody gets this.
I know we're gonna have a work session, how does the state do it overtime for their, their mores?
They go home at midnight, and so, and again, I'm, I'm not pointing fingers at the state, and I think some of this, but they just. They get set their overtime, and then. We're taking eighty, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, we're taking eighty-five, seventy-five to eighty-five percent of the nine one one calls in this county.
Take, or at least.
Again, I'm giving them the benefit of the, but they've got four guys or five guys most of the time, and I've got ten or twelve most of the time. Is Dutch offline?
No.
But, but anyway.
I was talking to my wife.
I'm sorry, I just seen you whisper, but nothing was coming out.
Same thing his wife bought.
Yeah, so you didn't hear him either, right? But uh, there was. They, they go home at midnight and take calls from home, and they don't get paid, you know, the state, they have their own. Situation, and when they get a budget, you know, they, they get X number of dollars, and they work it, and but out here. They usually, they're doing DUI patrols, they're doing all this stuff, because they're usually trying, they get more overtime than what they can spend, because they're. So their staffing level should be six or eight troopers or whatever it should be, they're getting that much overtime with four guys. So they have more overtime money than they can spend, a lot of times, well, they spend it, but.
Let's get a.
Set up several budget meetings, so we can, you know, you know, when we pick a day, we start budgeting too, so.
Well, that's what we generally, and again, I've talked to Luke, I've talked to the sheriff, and uh, I mean, there's several issues that. That we need to discuss, and I, I think, and again, I, I think that that's the appropriate way to do it, because there's a lot of things that we need to discuss, and everybody get on the same page, and then. Before we can make a decision, and and instead of spending two hours in here beating a horse, you know what I mean, that's kind of my suggestion.
Okay, yeah, we'll just get one set up.
So you're gonna approve, I, I mean, I, he's, he's gonna call me tonight and wanna know, are we approving the overtime, or how are we doing that?
Make a motion for that, for the.
Hundred thirty-three thousand dollars?
The hundred and fifty.
Hundred thirty-three, that's hundred and thirty-three, ninety-three.
Yeah, it was, now, it was one fifty, two forty-five, including Tom and Karen's salary so far. My suggestion, and again, this is just my suggestion, is do the one fifty, and let us get through the rest of the year, and hopefully we don't have to come back. Uh, and again.
Well, I think, I think, I'll be honest with you, this is my opinion, I, I think. I, I think you need to start looking at these guys, and I'm including all of them, I'm not including any specific person, but when their shift is up. And if there's nothing going on, go home.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's what they do.
When you look at their sheets, they're not, they're not. Covering shifts.
But there's, listen, you get three hundred thousand dollars overtime, there's more than holiday.
A lot of last minute call offs.
Yeah, there's very few times that they're just over shipped, and if they're over shipped.
And I'm there. I'm there fourteen, fifteen, sixteen hours a day, and I don't claim any of it, the only time I'm claiming it is if I'm covering a shift for somebody else, or. Like, right now, I'm, I'm here this morning, and it's like, I just, I'm supposed to eat it, cause we're over budget on overtime, and we're way, you know. I, it's, I don't know what.
Well, we don't have a choice but to give it to you, we don't, but, but it's got to be looked at, you know.
And I, and I hundred percent, I understand it, I do understand, believe me, I would much rather be home.
Yeah, I don't even realize how much free time you guys do get from law.
I mean, we're there, I. I'm either on the phone or in my office every day, and I don't think you guys get that at all, and. And like I said, I know my time is always an issue, because it's like, oh, well, you can just go home, well, that's, that's all well and good, but somebody's gotta run the department. And somebody's gotta make these decisions, and they call me, I get phone calls every day, you know what it's like.
I tried to take my kids to the aquarium yesterday, and the courthouse has been open for forty-five minutes, and I already got five calls. All from completely different people, all related to something within these five buildings.
Nine one one called me at three o'clock in the morning the other morning, and again, it's, they're doing their job, I'm not griping about it, I signed up for it, but they called me three o'clock in the morning. With me, my wife, my kids up, at three in the morning, and it's like, uh, the guys just take somebody. Okay, you know, and there were some questions, and it's like, but I do that, you know how much that cost you? Nothing. I spent another hour and a half trying to get my four-year-old back to sleep, because now he's awake at three in the morning, and I, I, that doesn't cost you anything. You know, today is, it's just like, I'm just here, boom, boom, and, but, but anyway, I think we need to have a work session. And try to get a long-term solution worked out, cause we do need to do something, and at least I want you guys to understand where we're coming from and what our situation is.
Well, and I, I hope you understand about the money issue.
And I, I do, a hundred percent, and again, I've told you, I've never told you, well, screw you, you just gotta fund me, you know what I mean, like, I understand.
I know what you deal with, Mark and Chris, I, I hear some stories, and, and I know you've got a deep danger.
And I, and I'll tell you right now, as well, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, we'll get.
Approved a hundred and fifty, uh, thousand overtime revisions there.
Don't you got a, anything to say?
Yeah.
I just, I, I think we just need to get together with a work session, all of us sit down at the same table and, and talk about it. Um, I am gonna have to go off camera here for a little bit, I'm gonna try to stay logged in, but I need to go down to the lobby, I need to get checked out, and I need to go down to the lobby, I'll try to stay on here, but. If I lose you, I'll try to get back on, but I am gonna go off camera for a little bit.
We don't have too much more coming back up.
You sent the motion for the one fifty, did somebody second that? Oh, Roger, second.
Okay, all right, this.
You got anything else?
No, that was all I had.
Let's go with the approved mileage rate.
Hey, yeah, that's good.
You gotta do, when I said you sent, was it?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is the state. Which is right along with the federal. In the wage and review, meaning we just thought we'd keep everything G S A with the government instead of what you can. That, what we.
In-state travel, it would be easier for people going in-state travel, they just had this, so.
Okay.
Just seventy cents.
If we stay consistent with that, because like you have the extension office, they do a lot of in-state travel. Um, for all of our trainings, we do in-state travel, and it would be easier for them just to use the standard amounts that have to be built on there every single time.
Do I hear them, I would say would be G S A.
Yeah.
Yeah, do I hear them motion to approve the mileage rate up to seventy cents? I make a motion, we approve the mileage rate.
Okay, press the attorney's new hire power. Diana Lucas, she can't, currently, if I'm wrong, did she come over from Hampshire County from his office? That he, she worked with him.
Yeah, she worked with him.
Yeah, over in Hampshire, I don't know where she lives at, that's not important, but I thought she came over. Uh, what's your thoughts? He wants to bring her over, I, I don't see a problem with it.
She already worked with him.
Yeah, I know, I don't wanna say, I, I mean, the proof is what I meant, I don't have a problem with it, I'm glad she's come over, working with you. And uh, Carolyn, she's good with it, everybody's good with it, yeah. Do I hear a motion to approve this? I make a motion, we approve it.
I second.
I approve that also, region eight solid waste authority chipper use, we've had that before.
This is a requirement for every year, whether we use it or not, we have to have this one filed, we wanna use it, it has to be done now.
Yes, do I hear a motion to approve the chipper from region eight solid waste?
And authorize the president to sign?
Yes.
So moved.
Second, I approve that also, global size technology, renewal of uh, network support contracts.
Luke hasn't had a chance to look over this yet.
You know that contract.
For chipper?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going up there Thursday, I can take it and save it soon. Save you from mail.
Okay.
Save sixty, seventy, seventy, whatever, gotta save them now. All right, all right, so we're checking up there.
We're on global right now.
Global, I just wanna move, yeah, global network right here, you guys see a copy of your global networks? So.
But I made what we paint out, then.
I don't know, yeah. That's gotta be just a lot.
No.
Thirteen sixteen out of a lot?
Yeah.
I thought hundreds, like forty thousand.
A lot.
No, a year. I thought thirteen's what I paid it out for.
One ninety-five is your proportion of it, and then the other, the other one thousand.
That's way cheaper than what I thought it was, I don't know why I thought it was so much more.
I know we only pay a thousand something a month, um, for some reason, I was taking your portion, but only like a hundred ninety-five of that.
I might be right then.
Cause they got the, the actual administrative portion of it, uh, services, and then they have the vulnerable scan. It's billed separately.
That should go over sixteen thousand.
It's way cheaper than I thought it was.
Thirty thousand four hundred thirty-six thousand, yeah.
And it's well worth it.
It's definitely worth sixteen thousand.
Do I hear a motion to approve that?
And authorize president to sign?
Uh, yes.
I make a motion, we approve it.
And authorize president to sign?
And authorize president to sign.
I'll second that.
And I approve that also, okay, uh, West Virginia State Auditorium report.
They did only send one this time, so I'll make complete copies for everybody.
I have a digital copy in my email too. You guys want to buy an email, or you want her to print it for you?
Probably.
Email.
Email.
Um, I thought it was funny last time with the financial, I gave you a copy, and then you asked for a digital scanned copy, so I took mine to the copy and scanned it, it sent to you.
Oh, I thought you guys had a digital.
Do you need a motion on that?
To accept it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, do I hear a motion to accept that auditorium report?
And you have now have that hearing, office.
Remove the. And I approve that also, good view, thank you, Office of the Sheriff's submission of. A gradual for cruiser install, so you, we can't do that until you get any permission on that, correct?
The only way we could do that is if you're not using Roger, if we're using Roger, we have to give you the contract exemption. This, that's not me making recommendation one way or.
Well, I, I wanna ask you for, how long would that gonna take if we wait to get approval, we need them now.
The minimum turnaround is a month. And we have until March, that's one more time, they get the one-year free subscription. No, no, that's, those are two separate things.
Okay.
The in-car cameras is the overtime, he's gonna start working on those now.
Okay.
Yeah, this is for the uh, the outfits, we have four brand-new Tahoe's.
Did you get an estimate from the Gavber realm?
The one that did Chris's, yes, that's the thirty-six hundred.
That's the thirty-six, okay.
Yeah, it's thirty-six, and Brooke was fifty.
Do you wanna wait for a, a month on this to try to get approval from the auditor's office, or from the?
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, I'd like to do that, and maybe we can make some phone calls and light a little fire under their butt, maybe, I don't know.
Well, it's not a fire, the actual, the actual commission themselves has to meet, they only meet once a month.
Understand, just try to get them to, uh, make sure they put that on their agenda for their next meeting, and get it taken care of.
Bush comes to show, we can maybe get them to do one.
I would also recommend, though, that when we award that, we need to do a contract, I'll, I can talk to the sheriff, but we need to do a contract, that there's a specified timeframe. On the completion of those vehicles.
Yes, I agree with that a hundred.
No matter who the contractor is.
I agree.
With payment penalty included.
So that's on hold.
You're ready to take care of the tax office?
Okay, uh, yeah, we've already taken the tax office, uh, C D, second C D maturity, reinvestment.
You emailed that to me.
We did it at the last meeting, on the second, remember?
We, I thought we approved that.
We did.
I think we did too. Uh, moving, moving your office is ruining everything.
Let me make sure it wasn't something different.
No, I think you're right.
We bought them at the media the second.
That one, but this, I thought this was another one that you didn't have another one.
Let me look, let me look.
I was going back to old emails, maybe I didn't get. I was going back to old emails. Maybe I didn't get.
And she, we done two of them.
Yeah, that was one December twenty-sixth. So we did that on the second.
Okay.
So we're good to go there?
Yeah. Yeah, they've already been purchased. Hopefully they're.
Okay.
Maturing.
So. Commission personnel.
Uh, that's an executive session. We can just do that after you guys.
Executive session for reason.
For to discuss how to personnel related matters. And there won't be any.
No action to.
Now, like official commission.
Okay.
On that one.
All right, uh. Sorry, we're ready for the report.
Yes, so I have.
Hey Luke, would you mind if I went and did my report and then uh, and then I can get up here and check out? Um, cause I'm behind. Are we gonna go back to, what was our last meeting? Back in December? Or are we going from January second?
December the eighteenth was our last meeting.
You didn't do a report on the second?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, uh, yeah, that's what I was thinking. So uh, from the eighteenth. So I had a farm land protection meeting. Um. And didn't have a planning commission. Uh, construction progress. Uh, I was also at the Frosty's Forest Fair. Uh, that was three days, all three days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Um. And of course we went through Christmas. We had uh, Christmas, the Christmas dinner at nine-one-one center. Um. And then we had our, we had our meeting on the second. Uh, there was also construction progress. That day. And. And I've been, I was down here at the governor's installation. Um, or inauguration yesterday. Uh, for that all day. That was an all-day affair and I'm really glad I came. Um. Actually, last week, Rick Hillenbrand reached out to me, wondering if I was going. Told him I was going to and. And uh, but I hadn't got the tickets yet. And he offered me two VIP tickets that they offered to legislators. That he had extra, so I was able to take advantage of them and uh. And uh, had a, had a really good time and very interesting, very interesting to go to. I wish you, you guys could have been there with us. Um, wife come down with me and uh, we had a really good time. Nice time at the ball last night, nice dinner. Music and that kinda stuff. So it was uh, I got to talk to him a little bit, not as much as I wanted to. Of course, there was always a crowd around him, so it was kinda hard to get to him to, to actually talk to him about stuff. Uh. Of course, I I shared the congratulations to him from all the staff and and Jerry had reached out to me to. Uh, share that as well and I did and and. Um, got to talk to him and and he wants to, he he loves, of course, he stated he loves Mineral County and. And down the road, he would like to get with us and sit down, talk to us sometime, so. Uh, so hopefully we can get together either with the staff or with him and get that set up soon. And that's all that I have.
George, thank you. January fourth, you went to the EMS training.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did. Thanks. I forgot about that. Yeah, January fourth, went to that EMS training. Uh, Ja, I got in there right, right as it finished up and got to see some of the stuff that Dr. Curbos is doing. Was, was able to train them um, using these uh, ultrasound. Technology and and some of that stuff. That's really, really great. So that'd be really good for EMTs and paramedics. To be able to have this option, which they're gonna come to us for some money for this, but. Uh, I think it'd be, it could be well spent using these little portable sonogram or ultrasound. Uh, hooked to a, connected to a tablet or or a phone by Bluetooth and. They'd be able to determine if there's uh, internal bleeding. That's the only reason, right now anyway, that would be the only thing that they would be used for. Like car wrecks and stuff like that. If they can find that there's internal bleeding. Um, then you can get them right to a trauma center as opposed to take them to an ambulance and then, or take them to a hospital and then somewhere else, so. Uh, that could be really beneficial and I'm sure we'll hear more about it down the road.
All right, also you, we was in the courthouse the other morning, uh, Friday morning.
Yes, yeah, we met it. We uh, we met in the courthouse, just went through the vault there and and some of the things that need to be done.
And also, I wanna ask you before you leave real quick, the auditor's training that's coming up here. Uh, I wouldn't mind going to Martinsburg. I've been to different ones in different places. Martinsburg has the least amount of people. Because you're not in the middle of the state and you.
Yeah.
It seems like it's better. I like it getting better.
Yeah, I went in. Yeah, when uh, when is the one in Martinsburg? I forget. I don't have it in front of me.
It's January twenty-nine?
Okay. I'm good with that.
Figure out, cause I wasn't sure if you all were gonna try to reschedule that February eleventh meeting and just go to one in Charleston since you're already traveling down there.
You're gonna have so many people down there and I don't know what time we have to be there. I'd like to go to one in Martinsburg.
Let's, yeah, let's just.
I like it better. I do. I've been to different places. I like it better.
I agree. Let's just go to Martinsburg. We can do that.
So are all three of you going to Martinsburg?
I would like to. Yes. Don't we all have to go together? Don't we have to be there at the same one or?
No, no. I leave and I want a Charleston one, cause we're already gonna be in Charleston.
Yeah.
Oh, we're gonna leave very early.
I don't wanna leave early.
Well, then immediately, it's like a one-thirty. You all wouldn't have to leave till ten.
Ten, well. But I like the one down there, cause you don't have the people down there. You don't have the counties attending that down there that you have in the middle of the state.
It doesn't matter. I mean, where you all go. Do we need to register you?
Yes.
Jason, do you need registered too?
Yeah.
Dutch, you want us to register you as well?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, no, we'll be down in the morning, come back same day. Same day. Okay. All right, thank you, Dutch.
All right, thank you. You guys have a good day.
You do be safe coming home.
All right, we'll do. Bye.
Um, I wanna go ahead and schedule that. Oh, should have done that, the work session. Well, it was on there.
Well, yes.
Oh, he'll be home soon. Um, what dates you guys have available for the work session?
When will uh, Joel be back?
Oh, I think he comes back this week, like I think tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Can I approve the hundred fifty is your?
Um, well, I think he had some court security.
This, this is.
I can, I'll be heading to both of them booked for the next three weeks, but I can be. Are you coming to the building commission meeting on Thursday though?
Yeah.
This Thursday. Uh, there's building commission meeting at one on Thursday.
I'll be in Petersburg.
Okay. All day.
I'm gonna be up there from about nine-thirty to about two.
Building commission meeting at one to two?
Uh, yes, yeah, one to two, second plan. That's up to you all. I mean, if you wanna try to shoot for three o'clock, Roger.
Uh, I, that usually comes to those too. I got, I'm, I got a blood appointment at. Three forty-five.
I have another board meeting that day with the. County Virginia.
Won't you make it to week after?
What about the twenty-second? I'm, the twentieth is a holiday. I'm taking off the twenty-first and nearly get it.
Twenty-second's good.
Twenty-second works for me.
Make it in the morning.
Yeah, it's like eight-thirty, okay?
Eight-thirty-nine, whatever's good with everybody else.
And I'll double check Joel. I mean, uh.
Send us a message.
Yeah. Dutch, that's what I meant was Dutch. J.J. and Joel told me they can make whenever work. Wednesday, twenty, as they were telling me days they couldn't do.
Okay, you wanna give your report?
Yeah, I wanna, once I go, if I don't take note on that, it'll be gone. Check with Joel. Okay. Um. See the work session. She isn't on that today, that today. Um, I had sent you all, um, after the last meeting, we had discussed budgets and things. Um, I had, I worked, I ended up working nine-one-one for a call-off. Um, so I had twelve hours to, to think. And um, I took that, a part of that time to go through and look at our budgets for the last. Um, thirteen years, cause that's what's available on state honors website. Um. I reviewed like the revised budget numbers and what would have been finalized at the end of the year. Um, and just wanted to talk about some trends, cause we had talked about like COVID funding, that kind of thing. Um, so here is our total county revenues for the last thirteen years. Um. The. Total revenues does include unassigned fund balance. The unassigned fund balance revenues are the orange here at the bottom. They're not revenue, but the number. Um, the yellow is the property tax revenue annually. And the gray is all of our revenue, not including unassigned fund balance. So since in the last thirteen years. Our um, revenues have grown by twenty-six point three percent with property tax revenue rising by forty-one point five four percent. Um, one of the things we had talked about, and that's why I really wanted to look, um, was about COVID money. So our carryovers actually started two fiscal years prior to ever receiving any COVID funds. Um, so our first carryover of over a million dollars was in fiscal year twenty-eighteen. Um, in twenty-nineteen, we also carried over, over a million dollars. And then twenty-twenty was the first year that we received COVID funds. It was like. I pulled the exact date, but it was after July first of twenty-twenty when we received that first check. So they wouldn't have been reflected until twenty-twenty-one. So you can see that there was a definite spike in the unassigned fund balance in twenty-twenty-one. However, we were carrying over a million dollars or more prior to that. Um, so that's what our revenues have looked like, um, for the last several years. Um, one of the biggest things I noticed was um. Law enforcement trends, um, cause obviously that's a hot topic. Their budget has increased by a hundred and thirty.
Started here, we only had four officers.
Right, right. Um, has increased by a hundred and thirty-three percent in the last ten years, so two and a quarter times. Um, what it used to be. I don't know the number of officers in two thousand thirteen. That's nothing other than I'm showing that. You can see, year over year, those costs continue to increase substantially. Um, I mean, those aren't minor increases. You can see a huge trend, um. Cause I'm not sure, what year did you all add the majority of the officers? Cause the same number's been there.
Well, we've been adding a few.
I think twenty-eighteen was the last time you added officers.
We, we told Jeremy, he can, he's his comment, and I'm gonna quote what he said, cause I'll, cause. This kinda sticks with me because it, it wasn't accurate. I mean, I don't know. I don't think it was his fault, but he said if we hire two more, that'll cut down on the overtime. What did it increase the overtime?
Well, and the only reason I'm showing this one is not because I feel like there's any action or anything. It's just. When you look over budgets and see where growth has been.
Yeah.
It's all, um, in law enforcement. The, so the orange is the law enforcement budget. The blue is sheriff, is treasurer. Um. The green is the courthouse security. Uh, you can see where it kind of, where we did have it.
It's not bad.
And then it started going up. It's only in the hundreds. Um, and then the green, no, no, sorry, not the green. The yellow is um, sheriff capital. And that's one they don't necessarily control. The cost of vehicles has gone up and that's where that.
They can't tell on her.
Um, is that, uh, but I thought that was an interesting trend. So this is the graph, this is the graphic for the, um. Like the employees and things that are directly under the commission, um. So. The county administrator, the blue, that's my line. There was a huge spike, cause we took some professional services for architecture out of it. Um, but you can see where it's been over the years and we're actually below where we used to be. But that's because staff is now shared. Um, personnel office is maintenance. Um, and which are?
That color.
That's the orange.
Okay.
Uh, emergency services is gray. Um, you can see that it's basically stayed the same. It's actually. Gone down or pretty close, um. The courthouse line, actually, this is the courthouse line. I'm sorry, this blue is county administrator. So we've gone down. This is the courthouse line and we paid Tom's large bills out of that, um. But this is where some of maintenance things come out of in our materials and supplies for a lot of stuff, um. And I just realized I did not put other buildings on there, um. But it's changed. But I just wanted to, um. Go over those graphics and. I'll talk about that. I sent you all, uh, a general overview of that, but the biggest thing was I just wanted to see when the carryover started. Oh, our first COVID-related check was July seventeenth of twenty-twenty. Um, so FY twenty-one was when those funds really started coming in and you can see. In twenty-one, we have a huge spike there, um. The law enforcement budget trends I talked about, um, tax office thirty-seven. Uh, excluding carryover, all revenues have gone up by a quarter, twenty-six percent. Um, you can see the significant year-over-year increases, but that's oftentimes tied to a one-time expense for projects such as the buildings. Um, and then I showed you the graphic for. The significant increases and uh, well, the lack of significant increases in the commissionary. Departments, but I sent you all all of this and it's got all of those things that I entered and double-checked all that data. Um, but I thought that would be something interesting to share and I knew you guys had looked at it in your email, but if you'd have any questions about it or anything like that.
Revenue's looking pretty good for this year too.
Good, good. And that's why. Well, cause when you had said about the COVID money, I'm like, I wonder, and there definitely is a spike tied to it, but for whatever reason, in FY eighteen is when we started carrying over funds.
Well, when we. Were in debt for the Roger mentioned in regional jail for over a million dollars.
I'm sorry, one second, Dutch is following me. Yes, sir. Yeah. Okay. So it's too late. Okay, I'll make sure the guys know too. All right, sounds good. Okay, thanks, bye. FY, the embassy now requires you to turn over a tax exemption certificate when you check in. They want to take it later. So Dutch just learned that. They used to just.
I wonder, they said we weren't gonna have to, since it was gonna be on our P card now.
Well, he's down there for a different reason, but that's what they always have taken the P card for. We haven't had to turn in the certificate, but he said they're charging. It was probably just a bad check in. But make sure you take your certificates before you check in. Sorry, jail bill.
Okay, so when jail bills, we were in debt and we were literally holding electric bills to pay the police. It made everybody realize, you know, tighten up the belts, don't spend it if you don't need it. And we did, you know, cut, cut a lot of costs. People were more aware. Um, and then also in the doing your budget, you want to. The carryover you referred to, because you know, we are just, we weren't being very conservative about that, but it's gotten out. Again.
Well, and I just wanted, and I think something else that changed in eighteen was too, though, that the commission used to have to carry a lot of nine-one-one expenses. I mean, there were several hundred thousand dollars and nine-one-one paid back for the commission.
Yeah.
And all of that changed.
That's for the.
Then too.
Yeah.
Um. We started making our own payroll. We increased nine-one-one fees by two dollars and we cut staffing as people left and changed the way we spent money up there, so. Um, but I just wanted to share that, cause I looked over everything.
Thank you for, I was, we'll start doing that and you sent that email later.
Yeah, well, when you and I sat down and talked about it and then I was working and I had not had time, but then when I was working nine-one-one, I'm like, yeah, I've got time today.
Yeah.
Might as well do it, so.
That's a lot of work, thank you.
Yeah.
No problem. Did you, uh, did you report? Are you done?
Uh, I think.
Yes, um. Mine only starts on January second, right? First, first, uh, so I went to the EMS training thing on the fourth, January fourth. Um. Oh, I'm sorry, January second, I also went to the building commission meeting. Uh, January ninth, we had wage and review board. And then, um. Went to the courthouse, uh, on the tenth, January tenth. And then last night, uh, short gap fire department.
You was at the meeting on the third one.
The first meeting of the year that we set.
January second.
Oh, January, yeah, yeah.
We're all three.
Oh, I'm in December, no, yeah, the second. I'm in December here.
All three of you at the courthouse to meet with Crystal on Friday, or all of you at the EMS training?
No, I couldn't be there that day. I forget what was going on, but I couldn't.
Uh, the Christmas dinner at nine one one.
Yeah, I was there.
All three.
Yes.
Um, okay. Frosty Lakes.
I was at the Frosty Lakes all three nights.
Okay.
I worked only there one night. I worked all three nights down there. Or Saturday night, it was cold.
Uh, that's the night I went.
It was cold. My wife wouldn't go that night. She said, I'm going down there and freeze myself to death. Now, you know, right here's woman, I cannot please her. The other night she got up, now this is true, now you're listening on video. I know it's on video, honey, I hope you're listening. But it was, it was, she got up, uh, when I got up, but once she got up, she said, I'm telling you right now, you gotta do something in this house. It was eighty one degrees, two o'clock in the morning, and she got up. She's busted. I said, honey, you're not cold. And she's got to do something with the heat.
I would die.
I have my business. So anyway, I thought that was funny. I can't breathe.
I'm, I'm really sorry to interrupt, but I don't want to forget. Uh, AJ did send another uh Kestner's invoice for health department work. That needs to be approved today. Um, I need a copy of that, because we are, he needs us to invoice him for the invoices, so I have the other one, I'll just, I'll.
I have a motion to pass this ten thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the health department. Um, and pound them.
I make most, no, no, I second that.
And I already made a copy of that one, because I guess John had the ones paid like today. Are you going to be cutting checks this week or not sending those back? I wasn't sure.
Okay. All right, now I was at the uh, starting in December. Let me get my bearings here. I was at Fort H, you already got, I was at nine one one, Senator already got. I was at region eight on Thursday, the second, I had to go to region eight. And I was at the courthouse on the tenth. Uh, I was at, I met with the sheriff, because he was wanting to talk to me about some money that's for this overtime and stuff. So I met with him, and I attended the winter dance performance up at the high school uh, on the eleventh. And other than phone calls, that's about it.
Three of the cutest little ballerinas you ever did see.
Formed that those two nights. If you've seen the chicken dance, you'd love it. It was cute. Okay.
We are working on W twos, um, that will be done in the time and manner. Um, we're trying to do that with the move and such. So like I said, we're just trying to move along, blow along, and get areas cleaned out to not hinder the construction, but there's just so much, so much to think of.
Well, and I'm gonna talk to Zach about some things on Thursday, that Jeremiah keeps pushing us along. But their punch list, they've not made any progress on, like, there's a ton of work they still need to do downstairs. And they keep trying to push us out of spaces, and like, they've not even finished what needs to be finished, so he's got a we've got a little bit more time, because they need some, like, we've got walls that just aren't painted in the family court suite that they're responsible for and stuff like that, so he keeps pushing, but he needs to come take care of some of his business too.
Today they're working on the other stairwell.
Okay, yeah, there's just, I mean, there's like spots missed along, there, there's a lot of stuff they need to work on downstairs too, so.
We're going to go into exact obsession here in a little bit.
I was saying, you guys can finish everything else, and we'll do that, because there's no decision.
Yeah, there's not gonna be any decision has to be made, but you got any bills worth signing?
Okay, we also have exoneration in a space. There's exoneration. There's actually two estates going on here.
But I'm a runner. The, the ones in the addition, the addition.
Seems like there's, some of them are perfectly level, I could feel it, but that's me. I never saw anything happen.
I don't know, I'm, I'll pay attention.
Before you get to the first random, one of the keys.
Well, while you're on that, I'm gonna call lunch and just confirm that work session.
So there's two other.
Hey, with Wednesday the twenty second at eight thirty, work for you for the work session with uh Sheriff and JJ?
Okay. I don't really know what I would do. You got any question? And Alice, Alice?
No.
Okay, so that'll work for you? I'll, I'll send you all official access to confirm once I can hear the job.
And Alice, that would cause me and Ally.
Yep, all right, thank you.
All right, well, thank you for coming.
Bye.
Be safe, stay warm.
I, I, but I'm under eighty one degrees, I let you know that.
Yeah, well, she is too, so I had to compromise. She said, can we shut the door? I said, in one condition, we'll shut the door in one condition. I, I, she said, what's that? I said, you got, you gotta quit rolling over to the other side of the bed, because I get cold. I said, you gotta start sleeping real close to keep me warm. She agreed, so we're good.
Oh, there you go.
I can't help how hot it is. Our stove, it's just, it heats the house, insulated pretty good. And then it gets hot. One good thing, I got a back door that goes out on our porch, I can open it and cool it down through the day. And I do open it a lot.
When we burnt the wood stove, it was a furnace, and we had to do this all the time.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, but I can't stand cold. I cannot stand cold.
That's age.
I know, that's what she keeps saying.
Y'all have a good one.
Up in my house, I'm on the seven, being all curtains, trying to keep the heat there.
To uh approve the um states. Uh, I mean, I have a motion.
I'll second that. So I hear a motion to approve the uh chat.
Exoneration.
Make a motion to be approved, you tell them.
Yeah, I gotta sign.
I'll get, I'll get one with the, with the, these two appraisements and settlement came in yesterday, and I didn't get a chance to.
So the twenty second works for, uh, just text JJ and Sheriff to see if Thursday's work for them.
Hi, I'm looking at, talking down here as well.
It is a like public safety story, buy uniforms, police cruiser equipment, all handcuffs, whatever.
Okay, we will be getting another big one here before long. Chris had the border ammunition, I think he said it's one of us, now it's about thirteen thousand dollars over a million. Going out with the, got over to a short gap, there was a theater coming down off the, from the rock quarry. That sweeping burn here, catholica, you know, already, got the short gaps, it was here over here, half dead, stolen on something, the cruiser went over to take care of it.
Ah.
It was unfortunate, his back was broken.
What was in short cap last night?
Uh, the fireman, um, I was there, fireman's meeting.
Oh, just short gap, yeah, just short gap.
And I sent all the information to Stephanie, did she send you? Board meetings and stuff.
She did.
I don't assume it's okay that I give myself on the way out like that.
Yeah, uh, Stephanie already had it, her kids um into our school, and great kids. And there's some.
Twenty second, that day works for everybody. Then to that, we'll be at.
And the twenty ninth is Martinsburg, right? Twenty ninth is Martinsburg.
Is that right?
Yes.
She actually, I just turned you as we speak.
Well, I'd like to go to one where you can.
Rachel, I leave and I are going to, actually, after I come back from Ponce, I travel for me. I've had to travel at least two days for three weeks. Got a planning conference twenty ninth and thirtieth in Bunda Wheeling for three days for a intermediate E O C management class, and then we've got lateral county days, so. Jason, do you use Outlook calendar? Like, does it make more sense for me to send you event invites for stuff, or just an email telling you when to?
Um, email's fine, but I, I don't use Outlook, I just use Apple calendar. Hey, uh, did you go to the warrant department? No, I couldn't go to, I didn't know. I didn't know that they have one either. Uh. Oh, we walked through the courthouse. Um, that, I went through twice, I went to through after the board review, and then I went through the next day with those guys. Um, they're trying to round my head around everything on Thursday, the night the sewer guests were coming through that sheriff's bathroom, and the old sheriff's part, all come through bad. I don't know. But it was coming through, you said you walked in the, in there where you used to pay your bills, it's like.
No one said anything about that in a really long time. Uh, we spent a lot of time trying to fix that um at one point, and I don't know if maybe we just gave up. Because like, we've dug up, like, cut out concrete, dug up lines, the face lines.
Well.
I didn't even know it was still an issue, honestly.
Can't remember anybody's name, but um uh, the girl, Kevin said she.
All marsh.
She was in there, uh, she said, you know, today's my little day. I personally think it's because it was windy, it's blowing it back down, uh, that's my personal opinion, but I don't, I didn't.
I um, I have no idea.
It don't have the same person that we have in nine one three, but who knows, we just have to let it go.
Um. I think at the uh courthouse, it's a more complex issue, like it's a hundred and some year old complexity. Because we spent a lot of time trying to correct it. Um, that is off yours. That's the off your um file.
Well, that, that's all our leases.
That or still on YouTube. They evolved this week.
But I was surprised that Liz was on uh Zoom instead of the first. And we're still recording them, but the sickness has been going around.
And she got it?
I don't know, I just, that's an assumption on my part.
Sometimes it's the fact that she has to do production.
Thank you.
That's what you don't.
Yeah.
Oh, I haven't seen him.
Which, which.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Old city, it hasn't reached enough money. You should, did you hear where our electric field is going, really going to shoot up?
Or gas.
No, it's supposed to go up again. Uh, when is it going up? I know it's going up, it's supposed to really hit us hard. With the orange. I can't see up close, that's why I think the glasses. I don't need him to read, it'll put they put back those pretend, that I, I could read better without.
Do you need our official on this too? For, uh, she lives under, I didn't know where she lived. We need to uh sign this here, law and the payments.
Sorry about the sick days thing. I know that seems silly, but I hate them, and they're so bad every year.
Right with Alexis.
Oh, I see it there, I was, I didn't, I was looking for the name, I see it.
Well, I didn't have a typewriter in that office, the typewriter was still across the street.
I'm doing.
And uh, I took it yesterday, so I just.
I sure do.
My aunt Tom Debbie, I was trying to print the stuff for the meeting last night, and I was printing to the printer, and I was like, oh, we got a printer, I look back. Her spawn, I forgot we didn't have the. First one, I forgot we didn't do the printer. Can't move the Xerox ever until they pull the data line.
Really, we look comfortable for the jail. Usually we get it first. We do, it didn't come in.
End of the round.
No, last one. And we got it, it was. It up in the low forties. I hope I think don't start going back up.
And when you're looking at the P first off, at least keep it flip by flip. If the balance each. Item. Keep our documentation together. We did give a copy of the bill to the sheriff for him to. Maybe cut back, I think he's gonna cut back on some of the, uh, hotspots and stuff.
What's the hotspot?
We had the hotspot and then sort of creating a med bay. Got the, uh, cradle points. For the vehicle locators. So I don't think they need all the hotspots.
No, they don't because the cradle points are hotspots.
Yeah. But they're keeping some of the hotspots.
Um, before that training, I think we're gonna do workplace safety, fraud, sexual harassment, cybersecurity and first amendment audits. Is there anything else you think should be included?
They say, yeah.
Workplace safety. Fraud. Sexual harassment, cybersecurity and first amendment audits.
Yeah, about what you've been doing or?
Um, we haven't done first amendment audits previously, I don't think, but I do think that's the one. Um. But I think that's. Pretty much, I mean, I feel like there's a big hot topic issues. If we had more people that drove, we should really put some focus on that, but we don't have more people to drive, I think vehicles, so.
At this, down in Texas. For, uh, their vehicle charge now is, um.
It's the chipper agreement.
Two hundred and fifty, I'll, I'll take that if you want me to.
Wow.
Isn't that crazy?
Wow.
And that's moving everybody to the.
Right here.
Yes.
Before usual. I didn't even look.
I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm so glad that all person.
Well, sometimes eighteen's hard. Yeah, because we hire those kids and during summer, we obviously don't let them drive, but like cars work for us for two years and we can't let them drive.
Yeah.
So he turns eighteen.
This is the contract with Little Science.
So.
Yeah.
And I'm signing, just gonna give that chipper agreement to you.
I'll, I'll get it. I can take that up Thursday.
I was, I was putting it inside down there.
Yeah, that's all right, that's fine, that's fine, Jay. I'll probably. Want me to sign this? These here?
Yes.
Just the, just the front page, right?
Yeah. I've given you the chipper agreement.
I'll get this right here on top. Take that up to you.
That's why they tell you to drink.
Lauren, once virtually confirms the drawdowns, I think I give this to you sometimes, do you just want to print out that you know, or you got, that you saw them drawn down?
We needed a copy of that. We need for documentation, so we need to put it in our reports.
Make a motion, we approve the Kent's head. And I'll second that. Do you, that is, like, we all done this.
We need to make a motion, go into an executive session.
Let me get these other two.
And then he's gonna shut off the reporter.
But we got all the bills in the states and. If you're down.
Oh, no, three thousand, I was just putting, uh. The other concrete we just did, is that, that's what I told itself.
You don't.
Yeah, come on, go ahead and initial that.
Initial both of these.
Yeah.
Are you gonna have to get, that's your signature on it too? That's, yes.
Yeah, uh.
Jason, you'd initial off one of those two then for the health department since it's not a jacket. Because it's ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, he's just gonna be double checking.
I love you.
And. These here two, Justin, it's assigned, and these two here is. We initially both, okay. I have, do we have a motion going to executive. I think I'm going to go into executive session.
For personnel.
For personnel. Personnel, I said, oh.